Hi, good morning. I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is Tuesday, February 21st for the Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please?
Supervisor Bronson, here.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Heinz.
Please put signs down. Thank you. Yep, Supervisor Heinz was, his camera was on, so there might be an issue there.
Okay Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Grijalva.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
There he is.
We are doing roll call.
Present.
Thank you. Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is participating remotely. All board members are present.
Please don't. Okay, thank you so much. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask that Rear Admiral Rosen lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Now we have the land acknowledgement statement, and we have a video for that.
Good morning. My name is Roxana Marquez. I was born, raised, educated, and I'm grateful to be a Pima County employee. I'm also proud that both my siblings have served Pima County for over 20 years. I am currently the Deputy Director of the Analytics and Data Governance Department. I am honored for the opportunity to read the land acknowledgement. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral home lands of the Tahoma Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Basque Yaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Thank you, Roxana Marquez. And now Pause for Paws. I believe we have a video for that as well.
Hi, everybody. My name's Monica. I'm the Director here at Pima Animal Care Center. And today for Pause for Paws, I'm bringing you a kitty cat. His name is Sunny Day. He's actually a community cat, so he lives outside and has people that take care of him, but he got a little hurt, so he's here getting fixed up, and then we're gonna return him back to his caretakers. But today, I wanted to introduce you to Sunny Day and talk about our Community Cat Program and our upcoming event Friday, February 24th through 26th. We're doing a free mega spay-neuter event for outdoor community cats like Sunny Day. So we'll be doing that. You can go to our website to find out more information, pima.gov/animalcare to learn how to sign up and bring any outdoor cats to the snip and tip event, so we can keep all of those baby kittens from coming in this spring during kitten season. Thank you, guys. Hope to see you soon. We do have tons of kitty cats and dogs for adoption, so we hope to see you down at the shelter anytime, Monday through Friday, 12 to 7, and weekends, 10 to 5. See you soon. Bye.
Good morning. My name is...
Thank you.
Madam Chair, appointed personal privilege.
Yes Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, I just, and I want to thank you. We both attended Pets on Parade Sunday, and a pretty amazing event. A lot of cosplay, just amazing pets there. And it was 40% more donations than last year. So congratulations to everybody who showed up. But I really want to recognize our sponsors: Tucson Subaru, Raising Cane, Central Pet Copper Dog, TEP, Tucson Federal Credit Union, HSL Properties, Tucson International Airport, Better Business Bureau, Comcast, Suaro Solar, U of A Veterinary Medicine, Sunlink, Historic Fourth Avenue, iHeart, Arizona Daily Star, TMC Health, Fox 11, KTTU, Tucson Channel 8, Tucson Comic Con, and I mean, they really turned out in force. Tucson Dog Magazine, Arizona Music Connections, Republic Services, Thrive Works, One Hour Heating and Cooling, Beach Fleishman, A Loyal Companion, Achieve Strength and Fitness, Nova Home Loans, and U of A Foundation employees, Camp Bow Wow, and then all the amazing volunteers from PAC who showed up and made this event so successful. I don't know what, I mean, I got to ride, I think the star of the show was that vehicle I rode in.
Yeah, you had the Stingray red.
In 1970, yeah.
It was beautiful. I was behind her in the new PAC Mobile. So it was fun. I had a great time.
And that's the other thing, the PAC Mobile, that's, that's a new one. And we were also adopting pets. I don't know if Dr. Garcia has any updates, how many pets got adopted. It'll be interesting to know.
Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Bronson, we had a terrific life-saving weekend at PAC with over 28 animals adopted, 17 entering into foster, and six being returned to their homes. So overall, it was a terrific weekend for us.
Great. And then, again, friends of PAC really helped this. Lauren O'Brien, who is Chair, and then Mikel Boreal, Vice Chair, Michaela Nudson, Treasurer, Gina Hansen, Secretary, Jason Cook, John McLean, Andrea Miller, Clark Bright, Laura, and I'm gonna just butcher this, but La Cobucci, Jill Bemis, and Justin Chambers, and Kate Titus, and Executive Director Tori Chilsum. So all of you who made this a success, we really thank you. We've saved some animals, and we had a great day.
It was really fun. And the only other organization that I want to thank is Tucson Unified School District and Ross Gruge for allowing us to take over their entire fence, their whole area, and let us kind of set up. So I thought it was really great. It was a wonderful event. Thank you for highlighting it. And then I do have a pointed personal privilege that I would like to acknowledge Lisa Josker, our Facilities Director, and I'm gonna hand this over to County Administrator Lesher to acknowledge. And Lisa's here, isn't she?
If I can ask Lisa to please join me along with Carmine and the folks from Facilities Management who are here today. We are here today. Lisa Josker has been with the Facilities Management Department for longer than she would probably like me to acknowledge, but 20-some years and the last decade or so as the Director. And she is now retiring and going on to miss us tremendously, I know, but in terms of the, the millions of square feet of office space and the thousands of parking spots for which she's been responsible over the many years, we thank you for all of your guidance and leadership, and you will be missed.
Lisa, thank you for your service. As we talked about, this is quite a milestone, and I love it when people retire, not because they're leaving us, but because it's a reflection of a lifetime. So this is the start of your next chapter in that, and very, very, very happy for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much. I had the opportunity to work with you in my previous life, life as the Director of a nonprofit program, and Lisa helped so much, and it's just so invaluable. And I think that it is a reflection of your dedication and work, and the amount of detail that you think about every decision that's going on in these buildings, that our facilities look so amazing. It's such a reflection of you and the team that you've built, so thank you for all of your work.
I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody who's helped me through all the years of working as Facilities Director, and when I worked my way up through the department to become a Director, especially the Board of Supervisors, County Administration, Jan Lesher is a good friend, and most specifically, my staff, Facilities Management staff are awesome, and they are wonderful. They work 24/7, 365, to make sure that the buildings and garages and everything that they do is 100%, and they will, they will back anyone who, back up anyone. I do want to make a special point to thank my husband, Kevin, who is retiring at the same time I am. And sitting next to him is Mike Tunstrom, the first mentor I had at, at Pima County. He was Director of Facilities Management and retired in December 2007. So thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate it.
We have a few changes to the agenda, so let me go ahead and review those. Page four, item 13, Board Commission or Committee, Fair Horse Racing Commission, the County Administrator requests this item be removed from the agenda. Page four, item 14, County Attorney, revisions to Board Policy, Board of Supervisors' policy, the County Attorney requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors' meeting of March 7, 2023. And same page, item 16, Facilities Management, Contract American Indian Association of Tucson, the County Administrator requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors' meeting of March 21st, 23. Any objections to those changes? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just as a courtesy to the Chair and for the information of the Chair and my colleagues, and it's purely for expeditious treatment of our agenda, I have only number 15, 17, 20, 21, and 22 on the agenda, and I would be willing, if my colleagues agree, to pull only those items, and the consent and agenda items, the remainder be approved.
We're gonna go ahead and go through the agenda as, as it's put out there. Thank you so much. All right. Now we're on to item five, Presentation of Proclamation to Rear Admiral Brad Rosen, Commander, Navy Region Southwest, proclaiming the week of February 20th through the 26th, 2023, be U.S. Navy Week in Pima County.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Do we have a, have a motion to second? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Chair Grijalva, to accept the proclamation, we have Rear Admiral Brad Rosen, Commander, Navy Region Southwest, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Sonar Technician Petty Officer Second Class Kenneth Montgomery from the USS John S. McCain, Machinist's Mate Petty Officer First Class Jesus Fernandez from the USS Tucson, and Engineman Petty Officer Second Class Samuel Pierce from the USS Gabrielle Giffords.
Thank you all for joining us.
Whereas the United States Navy has been one of the world's premier fighting forces for more than 200 years, and whereas the Navy plays a major role in ensuring the safety and security of more than $22 billion in annual exports from the state of Arizona, and whereas the citizens of Pima County take great pride in supporting the naval vessels with local or state connections, the USS Tucson submarine, the USS John S. McCain destroyer, and the USS Gabrielle Gifford's literal combat ship, and whereas U.S. Navy Week honors sailors and officers with special events and programs to heighten the community's awareness and understanding of the Navy and its global mission, and whereas Pima County is a stalwart supporter of America's armed forces and their role in the defense of democracy and liberty around the world, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of February 20th through February 26th, 2023, to be U.S. Navy Week in Pima County, and encourages all residents in our community to participate in public events that are meant to honor current and former Navy personnel who call the state of Arizona their home. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the men and women of the United States Navy, specifically the sailors of the USS Tucson, USS John McCain, and USS Gabrielle Giffords, I'm truly honored to be here today. I flew a plane into the boneyard in the summer of 1994, and I'm back here nearly 29 years later, and you are wonderful hosts, and I'm truly honored to be here. So thank you very much.
Okay. We do have another proclamation on the addendum, item one, Presentation of Proclamation to Mariko Tippett, Chair of Pima, and the Board of Directors of the American Red Cross Southern Arizona Chapter, proclaiming the month of March 2023 to be American Red Cross Month. Ms. Tippett? Oh, Mr. Tippett. I'm sorry. Oh, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Whereas in times of crisis, people in Pima County come together to care for one another, this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating human suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of the Red Cross volunteers in Pima County who continue to carry out Barton's life-saving legacy. They join millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-saving, life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas in the last year, about 450 ordinary individuals in southern Arizona provided a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for our neighbors in need by providing emergency shelter, food, comfort for families devastated by 284 local disasters that impacted about 1,000 individuals. These volunteers also made homes safer by educating more than 1,200 individuals in disaster preparedness, took in more than 45,000 units of blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, sickle cell disease, and supported more than 3,500 service members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life. Red Cross volunteers also help save lives of others by training, training nearly 13,000 people in first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting about 350 people, loved ones separated by crises around the world. Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital strengthening to our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all of those who continue to advance the noble legacy of Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join us in this commitment to give back to our community. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of March 2023 to be American Red Cross Month, passed and adopted this 21st day of February 2023. Congratulations.
Supervisor and Madam Chair Grijalva, to County Administrator Lesher and to the other Supervisors of the Board, I want to thank you for this opportunity to continue with this tradition of supporting the Red Cross by reading the proclamation and announcing Red Cross Month in March. I want to thank everyone in this community for turning your compassion into action to help those that are in need when emergencies arise and help can't wait. People are continually stepping up day by day to provide the relief and care that our communities need. So thank you again. So, thank you again.
Now, we're on Call to the Public, and so I'll read the Call to the Public Guidelines from the Board of Supervisors, Rules and Regulations Revised, October 1997. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from audience stamping of feet, whistling, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. And so, we do have quite a few people for the call, so I would encourage you all to listen for your name. I'm going to call them three in a row. On the phone, we have Janet Marcott. Oh, are you here? Yank. Okay. Ms. Marcott, come on up. And then we have Mike Humphrey, followed by Anastasia Tesakis.
What fun. My name is Janet Marcott. I live in District One, 5425 North Paseo de la Taraza. I just came this morning because I really wanted to publicly acknowledge your good leadership and the good leadership and expertise provided by Dr. Cullen and the Health Department during the COVID pandemic. As you know, Arizona was, had the most, had one of the worst experiences of COVID in the country. We lost 33,000, actually more than 33,000 people. As the pandemic began, I began watching the data very closely, and was always pleased to see that Pima County was faring well compared to the rest of the state. And I looked at the data again recently to see that our rate of death from COVID was 8.3% lower than the rest of the state, our vaccination rate higher at 83.4% of eligible residents. So, the policies and directions you put in place paid off for us. When I talk about the rate of death, I'd like to put that into sort of some terms that we can feel a little more closely. 8.3% death rate means that in Pima County, had we just matched the state's death rate, 356 more people from Pima County would have died. And if you look at it differently, had the rest of the state done as well as we did, there were 2,440 people would still be alive and would have survived COVID. So, I want to thank you, and today I ask you to stand up for your own policies and guidelines you put in place, for the leadership provided by Dr. Cullen and the State of, and the Department of Health, and for science. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Humphrey? I'm going to ask respectfully that signs be kept down, and that, I'm sorry, excuse me, just quickly, that signs be kept down, and that people are going to be making statements that you don't agree with. You have to make sure, no one is being timed, so just a moment, please. We, I just want to make sure that everyone coming up to the microphone has the same opportunity to be able to say what they need to say without hearing things behind them. I think respectfully, for whatever your opinion is, regardless of what the topic is. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Humphrey, go ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board this morning. I too want to speak in regard to Dr. Cullen. I have 35 years of experience either working in the Health Department or working as a member of the Board of Health under nine directors. I have to tell you all that Dr. Cullen is the finest of the directors I have ever worked for or served with, and I completely support her, and I hope you guys will continue to support her and her work, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, and thank you for your service on the Board of Health.
Thanks.
Anastasia Tesakis, followed by Tracy Tolan and David Hathaway.
I am here speaking about the last Board of Supervisors' meeting, where we found out that Dr. Hines was here on campus, smirking and snarking during Call to the Public, and eating a bagel, drinking a Pepsi, I have a picture, and he unceremoniously stood in the background while we were speaking here, airing our grievances to this Board of Supervisors. Then, he miraculously decides to show up here during the voting time after Call to Public was over. I would like to note right now, he was not called present when you reconvened from your executive committee, which I also understand he was not participating in while here. I am calling today for the nullification of all votes that were taken at the last Board of Supervisors' meeting regarding Dr. Hines, because he was not called in and here, present, during those votes, which thereby will nullify every vote that you took with him present, subsequent to him sitting in that chair, which was vacant the whole ti, I was here. I was here, as many of us behind me were here. I am calling for you to immediately nullify every single vote that you took with him present, because he was not called as present to the public where we heard you call him present. You are to nullify every single vote today. You are going to have to go back and follow Robert's rules, your bylaws, whatever it is that you follow. Those votes, I'm going to call null as of today. Every vote, Chair Gahalva, that you allowed him to participate in should be nullified immediately.
Tracy Tolan?
Hi, I'm Tracy Tolan. I'm here today to address my supervisor, Matt Hines. Matt, your attendance record is like no other current supervisor. Your first year in office, you were late to 11 regular session meetings out of 23. In 2022, you were either late or left early, 12 meetings out of 23, more than 50% of the time. 2023 is shaping up to be worse than the previous years, and as the trend continues, we're seeing evidence that you should step down. Your conduct as supervisor is unprofessional and disrespectful to your colleagues and constituents. You rudely interrupt speakers as they voice concerns, and you mock us behind our backs because you don't have the courage to face us. I've come here twice in the last three months to address you, and both times you have not been present or on the screen. This is the first time I have the privilege to see you while I speak. My neighborhood and this county are facing a homeless and fentanyl crisis the likes of which we've never seen before. We need serious people to take serious action, and Matt, you are not fit to answer that call.
That's right.
I respectfully ask the other supervisors of this board to join me and demand the resignation of Matt Hines, and I'd like to give an update on my neighborhood and the homeless camps that plague it. The last time I spoke, that week, I went back and I noticed the next day or a day after, they were removing another encampment in the Arroyo where I live. This encampment just happened to be in front of a neighbor who had previously been assaulted. He was punched in the face by a man that had his belongings on his property. He was loitering. The man just asked him to stop trespassing on his property, and he was punched in the face for that. And I'd also like to say, Matt, you've shown great concern for the language we use. I have fentanyl zombies on my property, and I'm sure that offends you, but what offends me is you show no concern for the actual people who are suffering and living in my Arroyo, or you have no concern for the people like me and my children that have to deal with this. That's not, controlling language is not being humane. How I speak and how you address me and how I speak, that doesn't show me that you care. What shows me that you care is you take action, and the city and the county need to stop putting up signs. We don't need more signs, we need enforcement, we need law enforcement out there, and we need them to arrest criminals.
Thank you. David Hathaway, followed by Matthew Livett and Brooke Doty.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and the other board members. My name's David Hathaway. I'm a resident of Nogales. I'm the elected sheriff of Santa Cruz County, and I'm replacing the longest-serving sheriff in Arizona. I'm a relatively new sheriff, I've only been sheriff for two years, and I mainly came up here just to see how you guys do things. We have our own Board of Supervisors, just to get a different perspective on how things are done, but since I have three minutes, I'll kind of just delve in a little bit. Seems to be an interest in the audience on mask mandates, vaccine mandates. When I ran replacing the longest-serving sheriff in Arizona, there were six candidates. Everybody wanted to run, very contentious race, and I took a position against mask mandates, against vaccine mandates, against shutting down businesses, and I was told by many that I had shot myself in the foot and I was going to lose the election. And once and again, Santa Cruz County is a strongly Democrat county, and I thought, well, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Ultimately, I won the election in a landslide. I had four times as many votes as the guy who came in second place, so, I mean. Just to show that standing up for individual rights and not telling people how to live their lives, people know how to live their own lives, that that message still resonates with Americans, both Democrats and Republicans, and that's all I have. I'd like to just observe your meeting and see how you do things, but thank you so much for allowing me to come address the board. Thank you.
Matthew Livett? Thank you. Followed by Brooke Doty. That reminds me, if you have any written statements that you'd like incorporated into the record, please feel free to hand them to Ms. Maricas. And then Reese Rambaran.
Okay. In 1997, the city of Tucson, Pima County, tore down the remaining civil defense sirens in the shockingly misguided notion that the Cold War was effectively over, and that there would never again be a need to warn the residents of eastern Pima County of an impending danger to seek shelter or to evacuate from. Last week, on February 14th, at 14:30 hours, the folly of this notion was brought to a terrifying realization as the now infamous hazardous material truck crashed just east of the Cold Road on-ramp, spilling its contents and creating the closest things to a chemical gas attack that the state of Arizona has ever seen. As someone who is unable to hear the warning message due to not having my telephone on my person at 14:45, and as someone who subsequently drove home southbound on Cold Road with his family blissfully unaware of the impending danger, I am here today to shed light on this miserable failure of Pima County to protect the public in the name of civil defense. The only warning that I received of the gas leak on Interstate 10 was getting trapped in gridlocked traffic and watching homeless people fleeing for their lives on foot. Operational Command in the form of AZ, DPS, TFD, and Pima County Health Department was helpless in warning the public aside from sending out text alerts and playing infrequent messages on a few of the local radio stations. We received no word from the county administrator, the mayor, or the governor for the entire ordeal. All side roads became gridlocked within minutes of having the interstate shut down. I'm here today in the hopes of spurring the Board of Supervisors into action with the three following recommendations borne from my personal observations. We need to have our civil defense sirens reinstalled countywide to warn the public to seek shelter in case of a chemical, biological, or radiologic threat. We need billboards posted across the county that can post updated messages on behalf of the county in the same manner that ADOT does on interstates and state roadways. Lastly, we need our roadways widened and modernized on Old Nogales Highway, Sarrita Road, South Wilmont Road, South Houghton Road, Wentworth Road, Old Spanish Trail, and Old Highway 80. These roadways, which currently exist as two-lane connecting roads, were completely inadequate for evacuation and exposed the danger of neglecting critical infrastructure and what needs to change to save lives in the future. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Brooke Doty?
So, I was here at the last couple of meetings discussing Board of Supervisor Policy D 21.2, and the board's failure to enforce their own policy regarding inappropriate sectional misconduct in the workplace. At the last meeting, Chair Gahalva told me that she couldn't find her policy on her website, and so I brought a copy today. I'm happy to leave that with you, and you can, you know, take a look at it. Also, you know, you've got a clerk of the board, and if she can't find your policy on your website, then, you know, maybe she should retire. Oh, and congratulations to the facility directors. It turns out, look, in a couple of months, if you want your job back, none of this retirement stuff happened, okay? It was all just. So, today, you'll be happy to, you'll be happy to know I'm not here today to talk about sexual misconduct in the workplace and your failure to enforce that policy. Today, what I'd like to talk about is harassment and bullying. So, there's another supervisor policy that you probably haven't seen. It's called Preventing, Identifying, and Addressing Workplace Bullying. It's D 23.1, and it says in here that the policy applies to, yeah, employees, let's see, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, it's, oh, elected officials, yeah, right there, elected officials in purpose. And it says this is things like using disrespectful or devaluing language against other people, things like repeating criticism in front of other persons, including coworkers, vendors, contractors, members of the public, for the purpose of humiliating another person, tempered with employees' personal belongings, tampering with their personal belongings, things like invading their privacy, attempting to exploit an employer, an employee's psychological or physical vulnerability, behavioral language that frightens, humiliates, belittles other people, making arbitrary rules, yelling. So, the policy says that if you know or should have known about any of that inappropriate bullying conduct in the workplace, you're required by your policy to report that to the Human Resources Director so it can be evaluated, so that it can be investigated, and so appropriate action can take. You're not, you're not, harassment, another policy, you're not enforcing your own policies. Thankfully, at the last meeting, Supervisor Christie spoke out publicly against that, but it's not his job to enforce your policies. You wanted to be the director of the board, you wanted the responsibility for this. Why are you not taking immediate and effective steps to prevent this kind of misconduct by elected members of the board and prevent that from happening in the future? Do your job.
Reese Rambaran, and then followed by Gisela Aaron, Mike Aaron, and Jane Hubbard.
This goes, I guess, in regards to Teresa Cullen. On September 3, 2021, my son was illegally quarantined under your policies of contact tracing in schools. He was supposedly in contact with someone else who tested positive for COVID, blah, blah, blah. My son never tested for COVID, never tested positive, no court orders, no nothing. He was sent home from school. He was illegally quarantined for 10 days. I was actually told by the individual that provided me with the quarantine order that if I removed my son from the house, that the police were going to call, be called, and take my child from me. So, I'm sure everybody here has probably heard my name in the news and knows everything that's been said. I tell you about 90% of that is BS, and the fact of the matter is, is the school administrations forced my child into a mask under your policies, sent my child home for the third time under your policies, illegally quarantined my child under your policies, and ultimately, in my attempts to stand up and defend my child, I was arrested. I'm still going through all the court proceedings. I deal with this every day, with the death threats and the harassment and the social media, and people like Matt Hines who wanted to call me out when all of this happened. So, your policies, you can sit back and you don't get to see the detriment that they do to people, you have You have people that come up and congratulate you and thank you for what you've done. You're not listening to the people that this is actually affecting negatively, which is the majority of the people. And so in regards to Ms. Teresa Cullen and her policies and her recommendations, I think they're a bunch of crap. And I think that you guys need to really reevaluate how you do things and start listening to the people that are here and that are speaking out, all your constituents and the people that are supposed to support you or that you're supposed to support, rather. That's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Gisela Aaron's not here? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Gisela Aaron and I live in Rita Ranch. Regarding Dr. Cullen, this is my own personal opinion. We have been subjected to her terrible health decisions in Pima County, and I say no. Ms. Cullen did not bother researching the COVID-19 virus and early treatments of repurposed medicines. She would have been familiar with the effectiveness and safety of hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin since she worked in the Ebola Holding Unit in Sierra Leone, Leon, where doctors routinely use ivermectin and hydroxy without adverse event. Dr. Cullen should have made better decisions than blindly following the dishonest CDC, FDA, Fauci, and Big Pharma. A little bit of research, a little bit of research would have revealed that what we know now, in 2003, we already had COVID. A 2005 paper published in the Journal of Virology was titled "Cloriquin is a Potent Inhibitor of SARS Coronavirus Infection and Spread." Hydroxychloroquine is similar to chloroquine, and as a doctor, she would have known this, just like Dr. Hines would have known that, who made devastating decisions for the people under their care. They have failed us. They have not used science for decisions in the years of COVID. They have violated their Hippocratic Oaths. Doctors are charged with due care. I believe Dr. Cullen and Hines and Adelita, I believe, are personally responsible for the many vaccine injuries and deaths in Pima County. And they are personally responsible for the lockdown and ruin of small business and restaurants that are now forever closed. Earlier this year, Dr. Cullen was nominated by Katie Hobbs to a position of Arizona Health Director. She foolishly accepted the nomination and stepped down in Pima County. She thought it was an automatic approval. Ms. Lesher, I disagree. She has not earned her right to continue. And we know from the media that she resigned, so you cannot walk it back. We heard it in December that she resigned. Per county HR regulations, all open positions must be advertised. She can reapply, but let others in. I know, I worked at the U of A College and I know many qualified candidates that can fill that job better than her. We should not be stuck with someone who lied under oath in a hearing. To our detriment, she was too accommodating with the politics du jour, and she did not follow through with many of her military assignments. For this reason, I strongly oppose Dr. Cullen's return to Pima County. May God protect us. And I want Dr. Hines to step down.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to ask everyone to please calm down. We have a lot of other speakers and I want to make sure we give everyone the amount of time they're due. After Mike Aaron, we have Jane Hubbard, Corey Stevens, and Carl Manis. And if you all could come and sit in the front, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Mike Aaron. I'm a taxpayer in Pima County. Last year, Teresa Collins was nominated for the position of State Health Director by Katie Hobbs. She accepted the offer and stepped down from her position here in Pima County. Anyone knows that means that she resigned from her position. I sent my comments to the clerk of the board and to all county supervisor. Adelita Gahalva responded to my email and she stated, quote, "Just to be clear, Dr. Cullen did not resign from her position in Pima County, and there has not been an interruption with her employment." While we prepare for her appointment to the State Health Department, she is still a Pima County Director, Health Director. I must disagree. December 27, 2022, KAGON 9 stated, a quote from Jan Lesher, quote, "Dr. Teresa Collins has been an outstanding leader and advocate for public health during her tenure." Let me say that again, her tenure. There we go. "In Pima County, as Health Director, I asked Dr. Francisco Garcia to serve as interim Director, interim Director, at Health Department while we begin our national search for a permanent End of quote. February 14, 2023, Bob Foster's article stated that Dr. Cullen was the former Director. February 14, 2023, on the Pima County website, Jan Lesher stated, quote, "Dr. Cullen has earned her right to continue the position," unquote. KAGON 9, excuse me, KALOT 13 reported last week, Teresa Collins stated she would be returning to her job as Pima County Health Director despite stepping down. This shows to me and all the other people in the county of Pima County corruption within the Pima County government involving Jan Lesher and many of the supervisors on the board. Thank you.
Jane Hubbard?
Good morning. I'm Jane Hubbard. I live in Oro Valley. I want to first speak the name of Jesus over this meeting and the decisions you make today. On February 16th, Arizona Free Enterprise Club published the following report. Earlier this week, Hobbs picked to lead the Department of Health Services Dr. Teresa Cullen, bailed miserably when the Senate rejected her nomination. As the Director of the Pima County Health Department since June 2020, Dr. Cullen mandated masks, shuttered schools, and prided herself on locking down the county during COVID. She imposed an illegal voluntary curfew from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM for residents as she tried to force vaccines, even going so far as to say it's an ultimate arrogance and privilege to think that you don't need to get immunized. After vetting Dr. Cullen's pass, that committee called into question her ability to lead the DHS and voted against recommending her nomination to the Senate. The Senate then followed suit and officially rejected her. I listened to the recording of the Arizona Senate Director Nominations Committee that took place February 9, 2023. Senator Jake Hoffman and four other senators interviewed Dr. Cullen. She frequently shirked her responsibility for the decisions made and her recommendations, claiming she did not go to the Board of Supervisors' meetings and she was not responsible for decisions of the board. Senator Hoffman pointed out that Dr. Cullen was the top public health official of Pima County, and she was trying to separate herself from decision-making, which was misleading and disingenuous. Dr. Cullen's own words, when she took the job as Pima County Public Health Director, "with strong leadership is critically necessary." Per Senator Hoffman, "Under her leadership and policies, there were losses of thousands of jobs. Her policies led to depression, suicide, and despair, which all skyrocketed during the pandemic. She recommended policies that closed businesses without even having conversations with members of the Back-to-Business Committee, of which she served as vice chair." Senator Hoffman quoted a statement made by Dr. Cullen in September 20, 2021, "We closed some classrooms. We are the ones that make that decision. It's our responsibility. If there are questions, they come to us." He went on to discuss the adverse health and education consequences of closing classrooms. However, Dr. Cullen placed the blame on the school districts, claiming she did not close schools, the school districts did. She also claimed she didn't know the adverse effects at the time, even though it was widely discussed throughout our nation and internationally. According to several foundations on education in Arizona Department of Education, mathematics and English-language arts proficiencies from the time during COVID have declined significantly among students. Spikes of depression amongst young people, suicide, and significant setbacks in education were all things widely discussed. Senator Hoffman expressed how the students and children of Pima County suffered innumerable harm under Dr. Cullen's recommendations. When asked if she believed today with 2020 hindsight that the benefits outweigh the costs, Dr. Cullen answered, "I don't know." Dr. Cullen refused to acknowledge her responsibility for her policies and recommendations that she made that had such devastating consequences for so many Pima County. She must not be returned to this position. Thank you.
I'm going to echo what was just said. My name is Corey Stevens. I'm in District 2, Matt Hines. Teresa Cullen sold her soul to the devil for a bigger paycheck. She threw the Board of Supervisors under the bus in doing so. During the Senate inquiry, she admitted the illegal curfew which she asked for had an economic impact on businesses and thousands of jobs were lost. Thousands of those jobs were nurses, law enforcement, jailers. How many deaths have occurred in the jail, right? There's a crisis. We don't have enough people working in those positions. When asked about COVID shot mandates for county employees, she admitted she didn't attend these meetings and this was your decision to have that mandate. She stated the Board of Supervisors had a mask mandate and she enforced it because she was employed by the Board of Supervisors. She admitted that school closures had negative results and yet refused to admit that the statistical data about educational impacts, including mental health issues, it caused such as depression and suicide. She tried to pass blame for all this onto the Board of Supervisors, the mayor, and Chuckleberry, one of the highest-paid county administrators, who remember was double-paid after his unfortunate accident. The Senate rightfully rejected her nomination and we are taking her back to the tune of 200,000-plus when she admitted she was responsible for all of this. The lost jobs, shuttered businesses, and negative educational impacts due to school closures. Taking her back is as laughable as Supervisor Hines saying in his apology as after his indiscretion, "I take my commitment to the community seriously," all the while sitting in that office behind the gallery saying, "I can't take these people seriously." Seems to me that the physicians of this county have some serious integrity issues, right? Lastly, I would like to thank Garrett Lewis and his sound engineer, Ryan, for actually reporting news with integrity, okay? Because our local media does not hold your feet to the fire, okay? We need to vote no on Teresa Cullen. If she's not good enough for the state, why is she good enough for the county?
Thank you. Carl Manis? Followed by Andrew Perkins, Peter Norquist, and Drew Heaton.
Hi. Well, I'm new to this and, but I want to, I'm new to being a PC. I'm new to being a state committee man. I'm new to this because I feel like we need to stand up. I'm a general contractor. I'm a pastor. And I'm busy, but I took time out this morning to come down here and say what I think needed to be kind of voiced to. Concerned about the many crises that's going on. This isn't the Tucson I grew up in, you know? And, you know, come from a wild background and God save me and, but there's a lot of good doctors out there to get information from. Tenpenny, Peter McCullough, David Martin, Dr. Jane Rudy, Reiner Fulmich, Dr. Malone, The Frontline Doctors of America. There's a lot of people that you can go to and find out good information. And these people are fighting battles all across the whole world right now against this COVID baloney. It's a COVID lie. And, you know, my church never took no distance, six foot apart. We didn't take the shots. We didn't do any of that. But I know a lot of friends that didn't listen to me and they're dead because of a COVID shot. And one of my, you know, I represent a precinct here in town. One of my constituents come up to me the other day and said, Carl, you know what? My best friend took the shot. 15 minutes later, he's dead. What's going on? You still want to push a shot that lots of people are saying this is baloney, you know? So I would urge you to look into it. I don't know too much about the lady that's going to be running our health or has run our health, but we need somebody else, you know, to make those decisions that's better informed. I want to say that, you know, there's some other things. I was confronted, my wife and I, with a lady on fentanyl down by the freeway that come up to us with a machete. We got a serious, we got other serious problems. We need to close the border, not just sit here and put a Band-Aid on it and act like nothing's going on. It's ridiculous. This vaccination, bio shot, you know, there's 14 million people estimated have died from the shot, not from the COVID. You know, that was only a 1% kill rate. We could have made it with other things. We need to close the border. We need to stop the Chinese, you know, from influencing us, George Soros money. We need to stop that. We need to get rid of the machine for voting. We need to go back to regular voting, go back to the precincts. That's the way I remember voting. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Andrew Perkins?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. I am going to read to you guys from Romans, Chapter 1, starting at verse 18. "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of people who suppress the truth in unrighteousness. Because that which is known about God is evident within them, for God made it evident to them. For since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes, that is his eternal power and divine nature, have been clearly perceived, being understood by what has been made, so that they are without excuse. For even though they knew God, they did not honor him as God or give thanks, but they became futile in their reasonings, and their senseless hearts were darkened. Claiming to be wise, they became fools. And they exchanged the glory of the incorruptible God for an image in the form of corruptible mankind, of birds, four-footed animals, and crawling creatures." And if I may suggest, you guys can continue to read from verse 20, Chapter 1, verse 24 on your own, but it goes on to describe God's judgment on society that has turned from Him. And the good news is that, you know, as you sit up there as our Board of Supervisors here in Pima County, and you guys have not listened to the people, you guys have done evil to those that you represent. The good news is that there is forgiveness in Jesus Christ. If you repent from what you've done, if you turn from your ways, you can be forgiven. Thank you.
Peter Norquist? Followed by Drew Heaton, Roger Sepri, and Julia Strange. Thank you.
Thank you and good morning, members of the board. My name is Peter Norquist. I wish to also speak today on the continuation of Teresa Cullen to the position of Director of the Pima County Health Department. There are multiple reasons why I wish to protest her continuation in this capacity. You've already probably heard a lot about the business impacts, the wall of shame that she was involved in, mask mandates in schools, and the associated physical and mental health risks, so I won't belabor those. Suffice to say that her inability to take responsibility for her own policy decisions, as was evident in her Phoenix confirmation hearing, was notable. A huge bias existed in Dr. Cullen's selective use of data in her policymaking in the last couple of years. It is well-understood at this point that COVID case numbers were inflated through a variety of means and that the primary danger to people was not COVID itself, but the treatment protocols which were used in hospitals, which in Pima County were under Dr. Cullen's oversight. Conversely, Dr. Cullen has done no studies or tracking of adverse events related to the experimental COVID shots and has instead continued to indiscriminately push them on the community at large, including vulnerable populations such as children and minorities, even as novel and suspicious cases of cancer, heart damage, and other serious health conditions continue to rise. Dr. Cullen's military background, placed in the context of what has been emerging about the Department of Defense oversight of the vaccination rollout, is particularly troubling. Healthcare should not be the domain of the military. A military connection with the vaccine program is chilling and should be a huge red flag. Finally, Dr. Cullen's involvement with the creation and integration of a global digital health system is very concerning, as is her work on data aggregation and surveillance. This is about top-down centralized population control, pure and simple. If you'd like to find a position for Dr. Cullen, please find one that is non-administrative so that she is not placed in a position where she is likely to make the same mistakes that she did over the past three years. If you choose to continue her current position, you're going to have to look everyone who has been harmed by her policies in the eye and explain why you've allowed citizens of Pima County to continue to be punished under her de facto health dictatorship, which is essentially what we've experienced the last few years. I appreciate your consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Drew Heaton, and I have nothing against Dr. Cullen personally, however, I disapprove of her appointment. This meeting started quoting some data. And we can, you know, say that statistics don't lie, but statisticians do. I've never met public health. I have met Sharon, Rex, Steve, Adalita, Jan, Melissa, Sam. Individuals, not a vague, nonexistent entity. As someone who works in healthcare, I understand diagnostic codes. In April 2020, the standard criteria used to diagnose deaths with COVID changed to a death from COVID. I experienced this personally when my friend's family received their husband and father's death certificate with the cause of death as COVID, when he died in a car accident. Neither Dr. Cullen nor Dr. Garcia would answer me when I questioned this. Anyone who works in healthcare should know this, and I understand that not everybody does, because not everyone who works in healthcare understands or directly works with diagnostic codes. But I understand that, and it is standard across the board, so it doesn't really even matter which field that you're in. That's one example of many. Show me an incentive, and I'll show you an outcome. The money that's been taken into this county for these COVID relief measures may be legal, but it's unlawful. And there's a difference. And like I said in my last call to the public statement, that things might seem to go okay for now. You might, the policies that are being made might have your very good intentions of making our community or even this boardroom safer, but it doesn't last in the long run, that there's going to always be a buildup and before the public cannot take it any longer. There will be blowback. Last thing I'd like to mention, because, you know, some of my good friends are saying this, and I want to say that if there's any polarizing issue, you know, it used to be that abortion would be the issue, that if you were talking about abortion, you could tell the difference between a Republican and Democrat based on how they answered that question. I'm a libertarian, so, you know, I don't, I don't fall for that. I admonished my, I would admonish my fellow Americans as well as you. That any polarizing issue, that being the border, is meant to distract you. If you put, that's all I'm going to say because my time is out, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger Sepri. And then, following Roger's, Julia Strange, Tim Lox, thank you, and Stephanie Kirk.
Chairman Grolba and the board, my name's Roger Score. Been a Pima County resident since I used to fill Titan II missiles with fuel and oxidizer back in the early 80s. We hear Matt Hines wanting everybody to wear a mask. Still, people walk around with them on, depleting themselves of oxygen. But when we had that big trailer full of acid out there, leaking all over Coeb Road, blowing it across Reed Ranch, the freeway, there is no, no warning to put a mask on. This is what I worked in for four years. I mean, if we had an oxidizer leak, which is basically the same thing, you'd at least pull your shirt up over your face and try to block part of it. You didn't sit there and breathe it in. Where were you guys? And Ms. Grolba, you might want to read the rules to this meeting here. You're allowed to have signs. And when I did serve in the military, I also was there to protect the First Amendment. We have a First Amendment, right? If you want to hold your sign up, just don't block the person behind you and hold your sign up. Be an American. The communism has to leave. See, we got laws in this country, and what these laws do in the Constitution, it's set up to protect us from you. And it's also set up, what you forget is to protect you from us. If you want to ignore the laws to this country, you're headed down a slippery slope. And your little puppet masters that tell you how to vote, where to sit, where to walk, where to stand, and sit there with your smirky grin on your face, you know, that's just totally disrespectful. Be professional. When those laws break down, you guys are going to be in big trouble. So there's a reason you want to take our guns away, because you don't respect the laws that protect us from you. And someday, we're not going to respect the laws that protect you from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, supervisors. My name is Julia Strange. I'm a Vice President with TMC Health, which includes Tucson Medical Center, TMC One, and several other entities serving the region. I've come before you several times over the last three years to share our perspectives from the frontline of the pandemic, and to acknowledge and thank you and your staff for the leadership demonstrated during the public health emergency. I appreciate having a few minutes today and would like to recognize the value specifically of Pima County Health Department and Teresa, Dr. Teresa Cullen, both for the high-profile work during the COVID pandemic, but also for the day-to-day leadership provided to improve the health and well-being of Pima County. Our public health leader during the unprecedented public health emergency has been a trusted partner to us every day, particularly when our hospital was facing the most challenging times. From facilitating federal staffing resources so that we could care for the patients who came to us, to bringing forward the county's first, the country, one of the country's first monoclonal antibody treatment centers, to testing and vaccination, Dr. Cullen's leadership was steady, and she was a trusted partner. What many may not have noticed, but made a difference on the frontline, was the targeted outreach to concrete living facilities and others, including skilled nursing facilities with testing and later vaccination, to save lives and keep the hospitals afloat. Leveraging sophisticated informatics to understand the most vulnerable areas of our county, and dedicating resources to ensure those individuals had access to services and so much more. As the pandemic unfolded, we all took actions based on the best information we had at the time. Undoubtedly, lives were saved by those actions, while our doctors and nurses know the faces of those who passed from COVID, and some of those faces were featured at the media on key milestones. Many more faces will never be known. I support the continuation of Dr. Cullen as the Public Health Director, and I thank you all for your leadership and your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Please don't do that. Please don't do that. And, and if you're going to put signs up, again, I can't see people if you have your sign up, which is the issue, respectfully. Tim Lox, followed by Stephanie Kirk and Shirley Lagarde.
Good morning. My name is Tim Lox. I'm here regarding Agenda Item 11. I don't know who came up with the idea that putting up no trespassing signs will effectively deal with the homeless and crime in our county. It's no more than a Band-Aid. It's like telling a criminal with a stolen weapon to honor no gun zone signs, or telling a pinko commie, as we called them back during the Vietnam days, not to cross into Laos or Cambodia during the Vietnam War. If this is the best you can come up with, then we are in worse trouble than I thought. How about hiring more police or deputies? As I understand it, both TPD and Pima County have a sizable shortage of officers. Speaking about Vietnam, when I first came here a few months back, I never mentioned that I was a veteran. I'm an eight-year Air Force veteran that served during the Vietnam War. I was stationed at Udaquaw, Thailand, turning wrenches on airplanes, bombers, tankers. We were told by our government that we were there to stop the spread of communism. It was at Udaquaw, when, I was at Udaquaw when Saigon fell, and witnessed helicopters and planes coming in with all their doors open and arms and legs of people trying to escape communism hanging out of those airplanes and helicopters. So, Adalita, I was poking around on Key Wiki. I found your name there, as well as the names of your father, Regina Romero and Kristin Sinema, as being members of the Communist Party USA. Is this true? Is this true? It's quite disturbing considering the Communist Control Act of 1954 prohibits communists from serving in public office. If Key Wiki is wrong, then I expect you would get that fixed. You're my supervisor, and you work for me. If true, you should resign, if it is true. Matt Hines, time for you to resign. It's over. You're done. Back to the signs. Our homeless problem is not just an issue with US citizens. It's also the illegals that come across the border. You know, people that you call travelers or asylum seekers. You work for us. This issue's been going on with the homeless for quite some time, and it's time to fix it. So what I'm going to say to you is to cut the CRAP. CRAP being an acronym for culture, race, and American politics.
Thank you. Stephanie Kirk, followed by Shirley Lagarde, Melissa Conroy, and Diane Sanchez.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Kirk. I do not feel safe or comfortable when I come in to speak to the call to the audience because of how my character is being portrayed by certain people on this board when they go on the Bill Buckmaster Show. There's not a lot of names that are said, but I think everybody can point that it's me for pointing out that Matt's not here, and when he is here, he's on his phone. Or maybe there's faces being made when there's topics being discussed. So if you want there to be a community norm, then I expect everybody on this board to do it. And you know what? About everybody on this board does, except for the person who's not here and the person, we will just keep that, I think we all know who that other person is. I go through security, and I feel that Pima Board of Supervisors need to do the same.
Yes.
Right? We're also in trouble for holding up signs, but we put signs here, right? What does that say? Unavailable for social distancing? When did you guys become the social police to tell me where I can sit? Not to mention, there's been a board on, there's been a member on this board who has held up signs when others have spoke. So speaking about community norm, you might, might want to get your own community norm together.
Yeah, that's right.
This board has continuously wasted my taxpayer dollars and patience by claiming certain races need to be reeducated, as if they're too ignorant to make a decision themselves over an injection that doesn't stop or prevent. This is years later. The fact that this continuous boost, that continuous boosters are needed may be your first clue to vote no on Agenda 21. If you do vote yes, $50,000 in taxpayer money will go to waste, as the Pima County Health Department and MHC continue to influence targeted groups of Latina/Hispanic women to take COVID-19 vaccines. That has been proven that they're neither safe or effective, and I spoke about that the last time I was in here. I do recall that the same thing happened with our Native Americans, and not only did I speak out over that, because I feel like it's morally wrong to coerce a group into taking a drug, especially after everything we have grown to understand about these injections. At 50.23, 50.24 Code of Regulations, yeah, felony charges times two. If you want unconstitutional mandates to continue to shower our country with shutting down schools, businesses, and continuous push of mandates, then you will see that Cullen is fit for her return of position at the Pima County Health, as the Pima County Health Director. I suggest that we vote no on Item 15. Pima County does not want Dr. Cullen back as Pima County's Health Director or her blueprint health philosophy. We want someone who is more objective to lead the Health Department, and we don't want to end up like New York either, right, guys?
Thank you. Shirley Lagarde, followed by Melissa Conroy and Diane Sanchez and Beth McGuire.
Hi, y'all. As you probably recall, I'm Shirley Lagarde. I'm a retired RN and an ordained chaplain. I'd like to address Tucson's ever-growing population of immigrants who are coming here knowing that they will be financially supported ad infinitum, apparently, by our administration, and our troubling, ever-growing homeless population, and the fact that there is no end in sight to this monster which has been created through the misdeeds and misdirections of this board. Large numbers of business owners have been forced to close their businesses permanently due to thieves who pilfer hundreds of thousands of dollars daily while knowing there will be no repercussions. I bring this up because it was shoved in my face last Friday evening when I chased after someone who would have in decades, decades past be referred to as a shoplifter. In reality, he didn't pocket a mere lipstick. He walked out of Harbor Freight with his arms overflowing with a huge number of tarps and other items. I yelled at him to stop and to pay, and then I ran after him into the parking lot, yelling, "Stop thief!" to the skies, where I flagged down a man driving a truck, asked him to follow the man, and then followed that fleeing man to the curb. What happened when I returned to Harbor Freight, you may ask, to retrieve my handbag and my purchases? The clerk remarked, "Ma'am, you didn't have to do that." That was when I turned to all the men who were standing in the store, who did absolutely nothing and watched it happen. They let the old, short, fat woman try to do something, explaining to them that their unchecked, that unchecked theft and all the others is the very reason that our businesses are being forced to close and for the high prices that we pay for our goods. We need to fully fund our, our police and fully staff them so that this type of crime will be curtailed. It's a lack of police support and the apathy that's inherent toward crime in our community that perpetuates this problem. Now, immediately following the oral presentations by members of the audience at the last meeting, I was threatened by Adalita Grolba that she would have me arrested if I mentioned the word pedophile once again in relation to the yet unresolved issue pertaining to the joy-blow encounter on a recent cruise of one of our unnamed board members, which was televised for all to see. I ask once again what progress has been made to uncover the passenger manifest of the cruise in order to verify the biological age of that unsupervised male who paraded into the board member's stateroom while wearing women's panties. Where is the leadership of this board? Why isn't anyone demanding a full investigation into the facts? Well... Pedophile, pedophile, pedophile! Prove me!
Ma'am, you can cut the mic. Thank you so much. That's enough. Thank you. Okay. Ma'am, that's completely inappropriate. Completely inappropriate. Melissa Conroy, Diane Sanchez, Beth McGuire, and then Kacha Peterson.
Board members, my name is Melissa Conroy. I'm wondering when you all will admit and apologize for your unconstitutional mandates that wrecked Pima County. I'm sick of you all sitting up there and spending our taxpayer money on your pet projects without thinking about your constituents, except, of course, you, Steve Kristing. Jan Lesher, what were you thinking when you said Teresa Cullen has earned the right to continue the position of Pima County Health Director? She was an embarrassment in that role during COVID and is an, and was an embarrassment to have been nominated to lead the state Health Department. Thank goodness Jake Hoffman, the committee chairman, knew how to interview someone for that position. He concluded with, quote, "We got an extreme candidate, a candidate with a track record who infringed on the civil liberties of the people of Pima County," end quote. And she did indeed do that. How can you board members not see or understand that? The residents of Pima County are not happy with Cullen, and we don't want her back. Rex Scott, what were you thinking when you said she didn't get a fair hearing? Sure, her hearing was based on her own actions and the evidence of that. We saw, we... We all saw what a dictator she turned out to be by not following the Constitution. We, the people of Pima County, should get a say in if she comes back, and we don't want her. I did want to mention the fact that you served Stephanie Kirk a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to bring that up, and that was all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Sanchez?
You're blocking people. Hello. My name is Diane Sanchez. I am a registered nurse. I currently work in infection prevention, and I have a background in critical care. I am speaking today in opposition of the return of Dr. Cohen. My experience in healthcare has to do with N95 masks. As those of us in healthcare would know, these masks have to be fitted to your face. Buying one at the store doesn't work. When we're fitted, they'll put a hood over us, they'll spray something in there, and if you can smell it, it doesn't work. Cloth masks are even worse. They give you a false sense of security. Once they get wet, they're ridiculous. So this continual pushing, as Dr. Cohen will probably do in the future and has done in the past, only serves to give us a false sense of security. I would suggest that the lady that brought data regarding Pima County's numbers should have compared it to Florida's numbers, where they didn't close schools, they didn't close churches, and they didn't close businesses. I have a granddaughter who has been a teacher for two years. She's a second-grade teacher, and she has resigned from teaching. Why? Because the children that are coming to her cannot read, they cannot keep up, they cannot perform, they've been sent home with little support to parents who frankly don't know how to teach them to read. And this is going on with more teachers than you would like to understand. So, and I would just like to say that if masks worked to begin with, there wouldn't have been any more COVID. We would have been done with it years ago. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth McGuire?
Good morning. My name is Beth McGuire. I'm a Pima County resident, and I just am blown away. I don't want to have to be here because I think the technology that allows us to watch you guys at home is fantastic, but clearly you don't understand that we are tired and we cannot be bullied and coerced anymore by this board abdicating our authority as citizens to some Health Department director who's not making law. She advises on health stuff, whatever, public health, but she doesn't get to say how we live our life and how we protect our health. And now you want to put her back in that position. That is so wrong, and if you are going to take all of this seriously, I think you're not going to put her in this position, and then you're gonna go find somebody else who's just gonna do the same. And I really hope that doesn't happen. Don't be secretive about your selection. Make sure that you're honorable about what that person is going to be doing for county health, and it's not going to be to take away our rights. What happened for three years has not been good. Those numbers can be faked, whatever. We know that they're all lies. Now you want to coerce Hispanic people with our tax dollar to get the vaccine, the so-called? That's not okay. That's totally racist. Why you would target a certain group of people with $50,000 of nudge propaganda? That's abhorrent. That's just showing me that this county board is not gonna change their ways. They just want to sneak in these little agenda items and hope we don't show up to this board meeting. We're gonna keep showing up, and we're gonna keep voicing our opinion, you're gonna have to sit through us, saying what is on our mind and how we live. And now I find out that you want to give more money to this stiletto consulting so that you can attract illegal immigrants or whatever you call them, travelers? Well, you know what? I would like some money to retain my living in Pima County, too. I don't have a job because you guys ruined my industry by facetious mandates and all the policies that don't have anything to do with public health. You're just control freaks.
Thank you.
I actually was just walking out the door. I'm sorry, because I have no more time, but I came actually to thank you and to speak in favor of item number 41. This is really a very exciting moment for Mission Garden, for Friends of Tucson's birthplace. You, as a, at Pima County, had the foresight to purchase Mission Garden in 1997, I think it was, and that was remarkable. That was in the heart of Chukshon, in the heart of the birthplace of Tucson. It's taken a while. It's taken a while. We're all working hard on making this a very central location to understanding what 4,100 years of continuous agriculture has meant, the longest in all of the United States, actually, as far as we know to date. So this amazing congressionally-directed spending grant that the Office of Sustainability and Conservation will be guiding us with is remarkable, and I just want to say thank you. And please, I know most of you have come to the garden. Steve, please come. Good. He's been there, too. I didn't get to be there when you were there. No. We go back a long time. Okay, you didn't respond, but anyway. Thank you all so very, very much. I think this will be really a watershed moment for Mission Garden, and I invite all of you to come and see down at the base of a mountain. The infrastructure that this is going to allow will be quite visible. I think that's probably enough, and I know my husband's gonna say I've got a doctor's appointment, so. Thank you so much.
Roger Pfeifer, and then our last speaker is Lynn Blankenship.
Thank you, Mrs. Gahalva, members of the board. I wasn't expecting to talk. I was going to be a substitute for Kacha, who thought she was going to be leaving earlier, but I do want the opportunity to second her thanks to Pima County again for their foresight. My experience has been with Friends of Tucson's birthplace since 2009. I retired from Tucson Unified School District as superintendent in 2008 and took this as an opportunity in 2009 to help this group form a nonprofit organization. And my purpose was to really engage the youth in this community in terms of its history, its diversity, and its uniqueness in all of those forms. I'm now currently the head of the Education Committee, the Youth Education Committee, and to date, this year, we have had over 700 field trips from youth coming into the garden. It has really been a satisfying experience for me, and I think it's been a great experience and continues to be a great experience to the visitors who come to this, what I call the Garden of Stories. Every plant, every object in the garden has a story, and we're happy to tell it to anybody who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Lynn Blankenship, and that is our last speaker.
Do you should have a yellow paper, hopefully? Thank you. County supervisors and staff, my name is Lynn Blankenship. I'm a Tucson native and a retired public educator. I've been following this board since May of 2021. I support all of Chair Gahalva's efforts to address the lack of civility in this meeting. Disrespectful behavior is not coming just from the audience. Disrespectful behavior is happening within the board. When did it become socially acceptable to be mean? I'm reading directly from the Pima County Board of Supervisors' Policy on Workplace Ethics. County employees are expected to be professional, respectful, fair, unbiased, honest, civic-minded, service-minded, and fiscally responsible at all times. I assume county supervisors are considered county employees. You all receive a salary and office budget paid for by county taxpayers. I have two questions. One, what happens when a supervisor is not following ethical conduct? And two, what happens if the behavior is toxic and a pattern? Over the last 22 months, there has been a behavior pattern with one supervisor that I see as out of compliance with county policy. This is Supervisor Steve Christie. I created a document to summarize the pattern I see. The first part looks at approximately 150 hours annually of staff time wasted by Supervisor Christie. This behavior is from a man who prides himself on being fiscally responsible. The second part of the document looks at an issue even more important: disrespectful and abusive interactions. Supervisor Christie has a pattern during board meetings of publicly, verbally abusing his coworkers and individuals he supervises. Supervisor Christie, in the last meeting, you verbally abused two fellow supervisors and Catholic social services, behavior you would expect to see at a hockey game, not a Pima Board of Supervisor meeting. I am closing by time with a call to action. Supervisors and county staff, please shift from ignoring Supervisor Christie's adversarial interactions to respectfully letting him know his behavior is destructive, and please put in place some guidance to support him becoming a more professional and supportive leader.
Respectfully, everyone, please stop. Thank you. Go ahead.
I am requesting that the Board of Supervisors or the county administrator ask Human Resources Department to investigate this issue and make recommendations for addressing Supervisor Christie's behavior. County taxpayers deserve leadership that is professional.
Excuse me. Thank you. You can go ahead and submit. I understand. If you can go ahead and submit your written comments, please. Thank you. No, thank you. I appreciate it, though. Thank you. Okay, excuse me. If you could please submit your written comments, we'll make sure that it goes out. Thank you so much. So what I'm gonna do now is close the call to the audience and ask if any supervisor wishes to respond to a criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize Mike Humphrey, who was here at the beginning of Call to the Audience, to speak in support of Dr. Cohen's leadership of the Health Department. He was appointed to the Board of Health by my predecessor, Supervisor Miller, and I've been pleased to continue him in that position. Also wanted to point out to the members of the audience who were speaking about the need for us to hire additional deputies and correction officers, that this board voted 5-0 in favor of the salary increases that Sheriff Nanos asked us to approve for both starting and continuing employees of the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and take a quick five-minute break. Can we do that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. If everyone can take their seats, please. All board members are present. Supervisor Heinz is remote and the other four of us are here. I do wanna request from my colleagues if we can move up item number 41. We have a few people that are waiting for this item. Is there any objection to moving that one up out of order? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move up 41. And so 41 is Acceptance of Office of Sustainability and Conservation. U.S. Department of the Interior, National Park Service to provide 2022 Historic Preservation Fund congressionally-directed spending to Pima County in the total of $500,000 for a two-year term. So it's $250,000 per year. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second by Supervisor Bronson. And we're gonna go ahead and show a little slide of Mission Garden. Does, is staff gonna go through it? Are we just, okay, great, thank you.
Chair Gruh Haba, Linda Mayrow is here, who is the Director of the Office of Sustainability and Conservation. And she can come on up to the podium and explain what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Mission Garden, oh, thank you. The first slide that we're seeing is of Mission Garden. It dates from the 18th century. However, it has a much deeper history of Tucson, which gave Tucson its name by the autumn village that was here when Father Kena came through. And so it's retained its sense of integrity of place all these years. I think, oh, did I miss one? Where do I shoot it?
Where does she point?
Oh, there we go. You got it. Okay, that's today.
This is Mission Garden today. Pima County's owned it since 1997. Purchased with Pima County Historic Preservation Bonds, general obligation bonds approved by the public. And the nonprofit group, Friends of Tucson's Birthplace, has developed it thus far. This is another shot of it today. And it's, as you can see, many of the plots represent different heritage foods and different heritage living practices and foods of different people who occupy Tucson today. What is needed is infrastructure. And so new irrigation, new electrical systems will be put in place. We also are going to be preparing a National Register of Historic Places nomination for Tucson as the birthplace of Tucson, which includes a mountain as well as the surrounding area. Again, it's been continuously occupied for 4,500 years. And, you know, so the amenities will allow this place to thrive and really provide more heritage education, food education to the public, to the schools. And you heard Mr. Pfeiffer, Dr. Pfeiffer speak earlier about it. And it's become a place of public engagement. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions, board members? So I have a motion to second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go back on the agenda. And we are on, the Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards, Flood Control District. We have item seven is a grant acceptance. Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management to provide post wildfire flood mitigation for finger rock wash at the Skyline Drive. Is there any objection to taking these two items, seven and eight, together?
No. No other ones to buy the flight. I recall factors.
Okay, all second. So we're taking item seven. And item eight is also grant acceptance for finger rock wash. Okay. I have a motion to second. Any objections? Item passes 5-0. Both items, seven and eight. Now we're at the Library District Board. This is an amendment to the master agreement for Biblo Commons. I'll go, I'll second. I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Any objection? Item passes 5-0. And Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards, we have approval of the consent calendar. I'll go ahead. County Administrator Lesher, do you have a recommendation?
Chair Gruh Haba, I would recommend approval of all items on the consent.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move the consent item.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion? Objections? Item passes 5-0. Now we have item 11. This is an update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety. And I'm gonna head and turn this over to County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh Haba, members of the board, you have received a written update. As you know, we have been providing regular updates to the board. There's been quite a bit of effort in this area. The one, one small item that has come up recently, we wanted to bring to the board's attention, was the placement of signs that will be going up. And I, I believe there was an indication that that's, putting up signs isn't much. And I just want to reiterate that that is one element of what we are working on. The board has indicated we've increased salaries, and we've been working out at the Mission Annex, looking at facilities and locations that can, we can provide wraparound services as well as detox services. We've been meeting regularly with members of the courts, pretrial probation, Superior Court, City Court, the whole myriad of services involved. You do have a written report. I've got no additional updates to that unless there are questions.
Board members, questions? Okay, this was an information item. So we'll go on to item 12. Pima County Adult Detention Facility Blue Ribbon Commission. County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Chair Gruh Haba, members of the board, when the item came before you to create the Blue Ribbon Commission to look at the need or the possibilities of a new jail, we indicated at that time that we would come back to the board with the work plan, a charter, and the proposed members of the commission. That is what's before you today for approval. Thank you.
Okay. And this is the approval of the proposed commission members.
And, and the charter and the work timeline. Thank you.
Okay, did you wanna read off the members of the commission? Or do you want me to read them off?
If you could, thank you.
Sure. So proposed members of the commission are Daniel Sharp, serving as chair as a former Oral Valley Police Chief, India Davis, former Pima County Sheriff's Department Corrections Director, Frank Height, PCSD Civilian Advisory Review Board and Retired Corrections Captain, Jake O'Brien, Pima County Public Defender's Office, David Olenek with Sun Construction, Wendy Peterson, retired Pima County Justice Services Director, Grady Scott, Pastor Grace Temple and Missionary Baptist Church, Chris Shafe, real estate development and member of the Rio Nuevo Board, Roberto Villasenor is a former Tucson Police Department Chief of Police, and Paul Wilson is former PCSD Bureau Chief. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Scott.
I move that we approve the proposed commission members, charter, and work timeline.
All second.
Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Yes, Supervisor Christie.
There's been some misconception about why I voted against this last time. And I made the statement that good ideas go to die on blue ribbon commissions. I am not, again, I am not opposed to a new jail, to the thought of a new jail, the idea of a new jail. What I am opposed to is that we are not moving in a proper direction as to the actual condition to focus on the jail and the jail alone. What we need is information about the cost of either rehabilitating, repairing, or reiterating the jail as it is versus completely tearing down the jail and building a new one. I've heard no, no numbers, and I've heard no justification for either keeping the jail and fixing it, or tearing it down and building a new one. We're moving far too fast, I think, in this setting with a blue ribbon commission, because in my estimation, at this point, we should be, again, looking at the physical plant and the condition of the jail. What we need is maybe five, six construction and engineering consultants, local, who can work together. We could even pay them for their consultation, just like an attorney or an accountant or whatever, to analyze the jail, to look at its structure, to determine the costs involved in fixing it up, and would it make more sense to tear down the jail and build a new one? We don't have any of that information, and it really is very clear that this commission is gonna go off into different areas with different missions, because on that blue ribbon commission, there is only one person, one person from the construction industry. We need probably five or six more people to make that determination. I just iterated about the need and the costs and the timeframes, because what's gonna happen with this commission is all the other members, they're gonna start splaying out into different areas of criminality, of rehabilitation, the values and philosophy of incarceration, lower times to spend in jail, less population in jail. All of these things are gonna be diverting from the fact that what we really need is information on the jail first, and then we can proceed with these other things. The other things that the commission is gonna go into are really the sheriff's responsibility. He runs the jail. And I'm, my fear is that the folks on this commission are gonna start telling him how he needs to run the jail. And I think that's wrong. He's a duly elected law enforcement officer, the highest ranking in Pima County. He knows how to run the jail. He doesn't need a commission to tell him how to run the jail. What we need is to, is a, is a group of construction experts to tell us if it makes sense to build a new jail or not. Then we can go into the other areas. So I'm not against the idea of a new jail. I just wanna see the numbers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much. Chair Gruh Haba and Supervisor Christie, another, I agree, which is why one of the committees that we're looking on, looking at is the Finance Committee to understand what the financial implications might be. This is, this, this group has a very clear work plan and 180 days to make recommendations back to this board, not about what might be needed. Is it, is it simply deferred maintenance at the existing facility? Is it a new facility? The gentleman from Sun will be, can call others to come together with him to look at the conditions at the jail. But please be assured, and we will continue to report to the board, that the purpose of this commission is not to tell either the sheriff how to run his, how to run the sheriff or to get into his business, or to immediately begin to develop a new jail, but to understand what the various parameters might be and bring those recommendations to you and the board.
Thank you. Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you. Now, I share Supervisor Christie's concern, kind of first things first, is the jail, can we rehabilitate it? But having said that, I'll be voting in support of this. But again, is this all running concurrently? And that's what concerns me. I think Supervisor Christie is correct in the analysis. The first thing we need to know is whether or not the jail is, can be rehabilitated, or if we need a new facility. I think that's the most important thing on this agenda. But again, I'll be voting in support.
And just to Supervisor Bronson's point.
Supervisor Christie, I think, did you wanna say something, Supervisor Scott?
Just very quickly, to Supervisor Bronson's point, she said the most important thing is to find out about the facility. That's why we don't need a blue ribbon commission at this point.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you, Chair Gruh Haba. I appreciate my colleagues' concerns. I'll point out that Sheriff Nanos was here when we voted to begin the deliberations on a blue ribbon commission and said that he was in support of the commission being formed and with all the other recommendations that the county administrator had made with his, with his consultation. And I'll point out that if you look at the charter for the commission, the very first responsibility is for the commission to look at, quote, "the current condition of the Pima County Adult Detention Facility to determine the need and feasibility for design and capacity improvements and/or construction of a new facility." The next two responsibilities are best practices and standards and other factors impacting operations, given industry changes since the county facility was built. And then the third is funding options available to the county for facility improvements and/or construction of a new facility and related services. So the commission could not only recommend that we move forward with a new adult detention facility, they can also make recommendations to us about any improvements to the, to the current facility. And I certainly don't expect, and I don't think any member of the board expects, that the commission is going to stray beyond these three stated responsibilities in its charter. So I'm going to be supporting this item, just as I supported the earlier item. Thank you, Chair Gruh Haba.
Thank you. I also think that it's important for this committee and whatever other groups have to come in, structural engineers, what have you, based on the recommendations of this group, to assess why a portion of the property, or the jail that is only 16 years old, if it's deemed structurally unsound, what happened there? And do we have any recourse as a county? Is it deferred maintenance? Is it, you know, not, the, the materials that were used weren't quality? I mean, I just have big concerns about a 16-year-old facility being in the kind of condition that we've heard the jail is in.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I concur with your remarks, which is why I think the number one issue is, can the jail be rehabbed or not? And if not, what are our, what's our recourse? You said it brilliantly.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay. This is for approval of the proposed commission members charter and work timeline. Supervisor Bronson.
Yes.
Supervisor Christie.
No.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gruh Haba. Yes, item passes 4-1. Thank you, with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 13 has been removed, 14 has been removed and, or postponed to March 7th. And so now we're on 15, recommendation, this is for elections, recommendation appointment of the Election Integrity Commission Chair to serve on Governor Hobbs' Election Task Force. Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh Haba, we are simply bringing to the board today action taken by the Election Integrity Commission and their request that the board ask for a representative of that commission to serve on the bipartisan elections task force administered by Governor Hobbs. This, this action by the commission is asking that the board submit to Governor Hobbs this recommendation.
Okay, and this would be the recommends the appointment of Brian Bickel.
Who is the current chair. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Board, what's the pleasure?
Chair Gruh Haba.
Yes, Supervisor Scott.
I note that the Elections Integrity Commission voted unanimously to recommend the appointment of Commission Chair Bickel. So I would move that we affirm their unanimous recommendation and communicate that to the governor's office.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll be voting against the nomination.
Okay. Any other comments? So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. All right. Now we're on, item 16 has been continued to 3-7, so we're in Contract and Awards, Community and Workforce Development.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
If nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move 17, 18, and 19.
Madam Chair, I wish to divide the question.
Okay. So, all right, thanks. So we'll go ahead and go with item 17. This is the City of Tucson to provide an intergovernmental agreement for the inter-agency resource coordinator through general fund for the contract amount of $57,709.60 per year. Administrator Lesher, did you wanna speak on this item?
Chair Gruh Haba, this is an item that we have discussed without the contract before you. Previously, it is an individual who reports jointly to City Manager Ortega and to me to help coordinate a variety of the activities related to issues dealing with the homeless community.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'm going to be voting against this for a variety of reasons. If you read the background, it says that this is an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Tucson and Pima County that would agree to create a position of inter-agency resource coordinator to be funded 50% by the city and 50% by the county. However, the employee would be a city employee. And my questions are, why are we, Pima County, creating an international, excuse me, an intergovernmental agreement for an inter-agency resource coordinator that's gonna be a City of Tucson employee? Pima County's paying half the salary. Our other, it mentions here, community partners. Are other community partners participating financially? No. It's just Pima County and the City of Tucson. And in my estimation, in regards to our, our current status with employees and departments, Pima County has plenty of existing staff to perform these duties, and an example would be those in community workforce development. And the City of Tucson and Pima County could each identify existing employees in their own respective departments and instruct each to interface with each other. We should not be in the business of creating jobs and subsidizing them for the City of Tucson, particularly when we have enough employees that can be added on to do this kinda work, and they can easily communicate with their counterparts in the city. We don't need to spend another $120,000 on creating a job for the City of Tucson. So I'll be voting no against this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
I don't entirely agree with Supervisor Christie, but I do think this can be done in-house with both the city and the county. And I have no, I wonder why we need to hire somebody. So I think I will also be voting no for not quite the same reasons as Supervisor Christie. But why can't we coordinate this with existing employees? I don't understand the need to contract and hire a new.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Chair Gruh Haba and Supervisor Bronson, there are any number of employees from both the city and the county that serve on, who serve on a joint task force and who meet regularly individuals, primarily from community workforce development, as you, as you point out. But as we began to look at the complexity of the issues relating to the homeless, to the work that we are doing out in the streets and working with a variety of contractors, we realized that in the final analysis, we needed an individual who was ultimately responsible for all of these efforts. And in order to ensure that we had a cooperative arrangement with the City of Tucson, we looked at individual that could be, provided for in this IGA. We used as a model, for example, when we began PCWEN, the Pima County Wireless Integrated Network, it was an individual who would lead that, who was paid by a variety of jurisdictions. But the reality is, a person needed to be within one system or the other for purposes of employee benefits, et cetera. And so in that instance, the individual is actually a Pima County employee and is paid through IGAs from other jurisdictions. This is a very similar arrangement, it's just moving that other direction for the IGA with the city.
And this is a current position that exists, correct? This is just the extension of the two-year, making it a two-year term. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Chair Gruh Haba.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I just had a few questions for Administrator Lesher, whoever she might wanna designate to respond to them. If you look at the description for the multi-agency resource coordinator, it is item A attached to the IGA. There are seven essential functions that are listed. And what I, my first question is, what are some initial projects or priorities for this position? And how do they align with those essential functions?
Thank you. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, I'm gonna ask Mr. Holmes to address that.
I'm sorry, it's not Chair Bronson.
I'm sorry. Cheaper. Thank you. Old habits. Thank you.
Two years, you know, we get stuck. Yes, go ahead.
My apologies.
Chair Gruh Haba, Supervisor Scott, I think one of the primary kinda initials, steps that needs to occur is that there's, has to be a clear definition on how housing is coordinated between the two entities. That, that is, seems to be a lot of gaps in the way housing is provided, specifically in the street living homeless area. And so as we look at that, it's trying to coordinate not only with the two entities, but with TPCH, with the Tucson-Pima Coalition to End Homelessness. They are a funding authority under HUD, and so helping coordinate specifically, cause that, that group is actually staffed by the City of Tucson. Right? And so one of the primary, I think, issues facing us outside of the criminality in the homeless community is where, where do they go? Right? And so some of those gaps in service that have to be outlined, funded for, funding needs to be, be acquired, and there has to be a priority in coordinating those services.
So just to follow up, the strategic blueprint that was mentioned in Ms. Lesher's memo that was attached to item 11, we'd envisioned that this coordinator would have a key role in, in working on that strategic blueprint.
Chair Gruh Haba, Supervisor Scott, that is correct.
Are there other projects or priorities for this position that you wanted to, to speak to?
Chair Gruh Haba, Supervisor Scott, there, there is the whole element of court-involved homelessness that requires a coordinated effort between the city and the county. Our county currently, under Superior Court, runs our pretrial services. That, that as administration, we have no direct oversight. So there has to be a coordinated effort between the Superior Court, particularly with pretrial services, and the initial appearances that actually are coordinated through the IGA that's being revisited through the City of Tucson. All initial appearances are run through the City of Tucson, and I'm referring to initial appearance for those coming out of the jail. Those two systems have to work in tandem with one another if we're gonna really create a much more seamlessness, seamless handoff for folks that are going through the system needing services. Because one of the primary issues is that people may have conditions of release, but they're not following through with those conditions. So they have warrants and they come back, so there's a circular issue associated with what's happening in IAAs, and more specifically, what may be happening through pretrial. So that coordinated, coordinated effort is another area that we expect this position to begin to outline and work on.
And then this next question, I didn't know if you wanted to field it, Ms. Lesher, or if you want Mr. Holmes to, but how will the city and county collaborate on providing direction to this employee? Cause that's mentioned in the item, that it's a city employee, but both you and, and Mr. Ortega will provide direction to the employee.
Chair Gruh Haba.
Administrator Lesher.
Supervisor Scott. Mr. City Manager Ortega and I meet weekly, we meet every Wednesday morning. This is one of the items that we jointly address in terms of the oversight of that individual.
And then just one other question and more a request. With the previous item, which was the update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety, could I request that in the future, if you have a similar item attached to the agenda, could we get a report on, regular reports on the activities of this employee? Thank you.
Supervisor Scott, our goal is, the current employee, Ms. Vasquez, presents information to the City of Tucson on a regular basis to mayor and council. So we've requested that she provide that same presentation here, so more people hear it. I also think that this issue is an issue that comes up very often in the call to the audience, and the question continues, you know, what are you doing? How are we providing the support? And I think those regular updates would be very informative to the entire community and also to all of us up here, so we can, you know, speak with current data and information about what is actually being done. And I also think it's important for us to continue to collaborate with the city. This is not a problem or an issue that one of us could do if we could and snap our fingers and it would be done, it would already be addressed. So I think it's important for us to continue to work together. So we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott and then Supervisor Bronson. Or Supervisor Christie, sorry.
I wish, thank you, I wish I shared your optimism with collaborating with the City of Tucson on the homeless situation, because up to date, they have not been good partners in this, and I don't think this item is going to lend any kind of credibility to make it even better. So I don't believe that the City of Tucson is credible in addressing this issue. And to fund another job and pay for it, for something that they're not doing right now in any effective manner, I think is a waste of money.
Well, perhaps the updates will be helpful. Go ahead, Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, my concern is a little bit different. This shouldn't just be City of Tucson and Pima County. This needs to be regional and include the other jurisdictions. And then the second point is, it sounds like, from what I hear from Administrator Lesher, that between Administrator Lesher and City Manager Mike Ortega, they are actually giving policy recommendations to this group. And that concerns me, because the Board of Supervisors sets policy.
Do you want to respond to that, Administrator Lesher?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Bronson, we do not provide policy direction, we provide the procedural direction in support of policies as passed by the board. If there's an incident in which you're, there's a concern about the policy direction, I'm happy to chat with you about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, and this is on approval. Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gudihova.
Yes, item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Item 18, did we want to take 18 and 19 together? Can we do that?
I'd be happy to move that.
All right, so Supervisor Bronson moved both, and Supervisor Scott seconds. Any, did you want to provide any information on either one of these? Oh, County Administrator Lesher, no. Okay, motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 20, Economic Development. Stiletto Consulting to provide economic development strategic plan update. And this is a contract amount of $10,000. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Chair Gudihova, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor.
No, no Supervisor.
Supervisor Scott, then Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you. I just had some questions for Ms. Lesher, whoever she might want to designate to address them. I recognize very much the importance of when we're revising our economic development strategic plan, that we're aligning the criteria for that update with the requirements of the Economic Development Administration. But can you provide some more details on the, quote, "additional input from the business community and regional stakeholders that is needed"? Please expand on the activities that are noted in the metrics when responding to that question. Why these metrics? And then what is the, and this is a, quote, "very important sector of our regional economy" that is going to be consulted while trying to get these, this additional input from the community?
Thank you.
I apologize for asking all those questions at once.
Can you actually ask the questions I was going to?
All right.
Chair Gudihova and Supervisor Scott, Mr. Heath Qurdi-Vaskovi is here. He's our Economic Development Director, and he's the one that's been overseeing this contract, and I'm sure can answer your questions.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, of course. Chair Gudihova, Vice Chair Scott, Supervisor Bronson. So just to clarify, the additional addendum that we did that is in front of you right now is really truly just an expansion of what the original scope is. So as we were going through the process, we realized that we did need some additional inclusion of small and medium-sized businesses within the community. So effectively, what we did was, we requested that the third-party consultant engage them a little bit more further. So what we ended up doing was asking them for what additional services might look like. And so on the addendum, or on the agenda item itself, there's an attachment, Attachment A, and it elaborates on what that scope is. And effectively, what we did was, we just added to the existing scope. So what we did was, we did additional focus groups. We went from two of them completed to seven. We did an additional online survey, and we ended up offering both of them in both English and Spanish. One of them was a business survey, the other one was a community survey. We did additional one-on-one interviews with small businesses and medium-sized businesses that was facilitated directly through the third-party consultant in tandem with U of A Tech Park and UACI because of their access to those businesses. That went from 25 to 37, so an additional 12 interviews. We did an additional half-day stakeholder input group as well that was in August, and that we weren't originally going to do that in the original scope. So that is effectively the scope of services that we have right now with the addition of what we're considering today.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott, then Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Vaskovi-Qurdi, just to follow up, the very important sector of the economy that's referenced is small and medium businesses?
Small and medium-sized businesses across various industries throughout the community. So not specifically focused on one, but it would include manufacturing, retail, restaurant, things of that nature, so across the entirety of the spectrum as closely as we could represent.
And the consultant made this request based on not only wanting to get more input from our local stakeholders, but also based on their understanding of the requirements of the Economic Development Administration?
So it was dual-part, actually. So we actually requested those additional interviews because we thought it was important to remain faithful to what the Economic Development Administration requirements are.
All right, thank you, Chair Gudihova.
Supervisor Christie.
Well, I read it a little bit differently. It says, basically, the purpose is to extend the existing contract term for additional strategic planning services for an additional amount of $10,000. The original amount was $105,000, and now Stiletto is coming back and asking for another And don't get me wrong, I love the concept of the economic development plan, and they, Stiletto came to our office and asked for our input, that was all great. Then it goes on to say that this amendment is, again, retroactive. This amendment was initiated with input from county administration and was, and work was performed during the initial term of the contract. Processing of the amendment was delayed until after the expiration of the contract. So the way I look at it is, first of all, the administration should come before the board and ask for the contract, which they did, and it was approved. Then, either through the, through the county administration or by Stiletto themselves, they expanded the mission of their original contract and are now asking to be reimbursed for services rendered beyond the scope of the original contract. I look like, I look at my experience with automobiles. If I told a customer that it's going to cost $400 to fix their car, and the customer says, yes, I agree to it, and I come in with, afterwards, actually it was $450, the customer in every regard would have the right to say, I'm not paying that $50, that wasn't what we agreed to. So somewhere along the line here, it looks like Stiletto maybe got in over their head doing more than they realized, and they're coming back and asking for $10,000 more.
Did you want to respond?
Yes, Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie. So in fact, actually, the original contract was a direct selection, and the original contract amount was $95,000. So we were able to do that administratively through the county administrator's office. After that, as we were going through the process itself based off of the original scope, it was actually county staff that identified that we wanted additional work done specifically with small and medium-sized businesses. So it was not Stiletto that approached us to do additional work, it was us, as we were getting valuable feedback from the community, saying we should actually engage with them a little bit more in this specific area, that way that we can get that feedback additionally.
It just doesn't sit right to come before the board and ask for a contract amount, and then administration takes it upon themselves to decide that we're going to need a little bit more work, so go ahead and charge us more, and then we'll try and get it approved before the board.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I understand that concern. Again, we were the individuals that identified it. And unfortunately, during the time when we were originally planning or hoping to take this, we were in the midst of everything that we were working on with American Battery Factory, which kind of sucked all the oxygen out of the room for that time. I know it's not necessarily an excuse, but it's just the way that the events played out unfortunately for us internally.
Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, I, just a follow-up, but I think you already answered the question. You said staff was making a recommendation, so you were the staff making the recommendation?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Bronson, it was myself with county administration, yes, ma'am.
And by county administration, you mean?
Just working with Carmine de Bonus.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For the clarification.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please? Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, this is for approval. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gudihova.
Yes, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. So now we're on health, item 21, Behavioral Insights. This is to extend the contract term to 12/31/23 to amend contract language and scope of services. Funding is U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for a contract amount of $50,000. I'll go ahead and move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Item?
Aye as no?
I'm sorry. I am, me, aye. No.
Okay. So item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Okay. Any objection to taking Item 22 and 23 together?
If there are no objections, I'll move.
Okay, I'll second. So this is LexisNexis Vital Check, ordering of vital records, and then the Town of Oro Valley and IGA.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Christie.
We're on Item 22 at this point.
22 and 23, we were going to take those together.
I'd like to.
Separate them.
Separate them to.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So I'll withdraw my second. So we're on 22, this is to provide ordering of vital records, contract amount 1.5 million. I'll move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
This is interesting.
Thank you.
Let me just get to the proper area here. The purpose of this item is that Pima County Vital Records issues birth and death certificates for Pima County residents. Certificates can be obtained in person, by mail, and/or expedited service using Vitacek. Vitacek provides a service for all Arizona counties whereby the public anywhere in the country can contact them, pay a fee, and the county will send their certificate directly to them. Utilizing Vitacek allows current and former Pima County residents to receive expedited copies of their birth and death certificates. And then under retroactive, again, it's retroactive. In previous years, $0 was included in the contract, and the contract was signed by the procurement director. However, given the amount of revenue collected in previous years, the contract needs to go to the Board of Supervisors. And that's, that's the question. Given the amount of revenue collected in previous years, how much in revenue has been collected in previous years?
County Administrator Lesher.
If I may, Chair Gudihova and Supervisor Christie, I'll turn to Dr. Garcia, who works with the vital records section.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, so this, back in approximately five, six years ago, the state Department of Health Services moved to an electronic reporting system. Previous to that, people had to sort of come in, play in-person to our offices to request their birth certificate or death certificate, and it caused a lot of inconvenience. As part of that improvement, as part of becoming sort of an electronic-driven process, one of the companies that was engaged by the state and by each of the counties across the state was LexisNexis to provide this expedited service. So that's how this contract came to be.
Yeah, but when did the, when did the revenue start?
The revenue started approximately two years ago. And at first.
Supervisor Christie, let him finish the sentence, or sentence, please, and then you can have an exchange.
So the, we began to derive revenue from this contract approximately two years ago. And the, initially, the revenue was just sort of offsetting the expenses. This was always meant to be something that allowed us to expedite the delivery of the service. The revenue has become more significant in more recent years, and therefore, we bring this contract to the board. If you would like to receive a full accounting of that revenue, we're happy to provide that in case my memory was not serving me well.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, yes.
Dr. Garcia, so the revenue started two years ago?
Two or three years ago.
Two or three years ago. And how much has been collected to date?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, and I'm looking at their payment charges here, Lexis-Nexis, and for instance, all-exclusive delivery rate, express courier 1750, express courier priority of 1950, a whole list of different payment plans. And you don't know how much has been collected to date at this point. How does Lexis-Nexis make their money, based on the fee structure in the background? It just shows what they, they charge the public, but how does Lexis-Nexis make its money?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I can't speak to their business model.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Bronson.
So as the background states, given the amount of revenue collected in previous years, and we don't know how much that revenue is, and we still don't know how Lexis-Nexis makes its money, I would like to continue this item. And one more question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Is Lexis-Nexis harvesting personal information and reselling it?
County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much. Chair Gudihova, clearly there are questions coming from the day of today, staff has not been informed previously or had an opportunity to respond, so if we could continue this item to March 7th, we'll be happy to provide that information.
That would be great with me, Madam Chair.
You want to do a substitute motion?
May I?
Supervisor Christie, go ahead.
I'll put forth a substitute motion that this item be continued to the first meeting in March.
Second.
With the questions that I directed to Dr. Garcia to be addressed.
And Madam Chair, I have a further question.
Supervisor Bronson, go ahead.
Are revenues exceeding expenses? I mean, I'm just curious, because your, your comment, Dr. Garcia, was you, there were, there was revenue coming in. So what's the balance between revenue and expenses? And I don't need an answer now, let's get that for March 7th.
We'll provide that out before, for the March 7th consideration.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second for a substitute motion for this item to come back on March 7th? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, you voted no? Supervisor Hines? Okay, so item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Hines voting no.
Madam Chair, nobody.
Supervisor Bronson.
I'm going to move Item 23 if there are no objections.
Second.
I'll second, or I'm sorry, Supervisor Scott seconds. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes 5-0. Now we're on procurement. We have Items 24 and 25, and then we have Items 26 through 32 that are all similar. So if there's no objection.
If nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move the items.
Which ones?
24 through. 34, yep.
Okay. I'll second. So motion, a second.
Supervisor Christie, did you?
No, okay. We have a motion to approve 24 through 34 and a second. Supervisor Bronson moved, and I seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously 5-0. Okay, transportation, Item 35.
I'll move the item.
Thank you Supervisor.
Second.
And Supervisor Bronson seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, on grant applications and acceptance, Items 36 through 40, we've already dealt with 41, and maybe 42, 43, and 44 as well. If nobody wishes to divide the question, and again, it's 36, 37, 38, 39, 40.
42, 3.
42, 43, and 44.
Okay.
Nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move the items.
I'll second.
So I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Bronson moved. Supervisor Bronson moved. Any discussion? Any objections? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously. And now, we are on hearings. So, we're item 45, liquor license. We have 45, 46, and 42.
Madam Chair, yeah, 45, 46, and 47.
Supervisor Bronson.
Yep, these are all hearings. If nobody wishes to divide the questions on 45, 46, and 47, 45 is a liquor license. Well, they're all liquor licenses.
They're all liquor licenses, right.
So, if there's nobody in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to these items at this time, I move to close the public hearing and approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any objection? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously. And then, we have a couple of items on the addendum. Addendum item 2, this is an update on Pima County Health Director. I do have a concern about this item, so I'm wondering if our legal counsel, Mr. Brown, could address any potential issues with discussing an employee who we don't directly evaluate in public.
Thank you Chair Grealva, board members. So, the board can go into executive session under state law to discuss employee matter. There is no prohibition on discussing it in public without notice of the employee. But there are options. It really depends on the content of the conversation. But if, I will be monitoring the conversation to pause it or to interrupt if needed.
Right. I guess my concern is we don't know what the nature of the conversation's gonna be because there wasn't any attachment. So, that's my only worry. And so, County Administrator Lesher, can you address the employment of Dr. Cullen as Pima County's Health Director?
Madam Chair.
I understand, I'm going to ask...
I think I presented the item.
Yeah, I understand, but once it's on the agenda, it is the board's item, and so I'm gonna ask our county administrator to address her employment, and then I'll call on you, Supervisor Christie.
Chair Grealva, Dr. Cullen is and has been the Director of the Pima County Health Department. I notified the board in December that she was being nominated to be the state, the Director of the State Health Department, and at that point indicated that we would be looking at a national search. I've subsequently let the board know that she rescinded her, her paperwork, I'm trying to think of the word, she has, withdrew her nomination, so she would not be considered for the position. Since she has never had a, she has had continued employment with the county, she never left the county, at that point, I simply let the board know that she would be continuing in that role.
So, can I clarify? Did she submit paperwork to Human Resources indicating a last day, any of that stuff that might, that we might have to, that might have to be changed at this point?
Chair Grealva and members of the board, she had begun the process. Nothing has been finalized or nothing needs to be changed at this point.
Okay.
Obviously, our concern was it would be irresponsible to not begin looking at how would we manage the department, assuming that she would be, become the Director of the State Department.
Which is why there was an indication that Dr. Garcia would be serving as interim in that position, 'cause the information went out in public and in the media, so I just wanted to address all of those things before I turned it over to Supervisor Christie.
That is correct. Supervisor, Chair Grealva, again, at that time, and in December, when I let the board know, that, I believe that was the day that Governor Hobbs nominated Dr. Cullen, that we felt at that time we would be moving forward. I made the assumption that if we were moving on a national search, which I had recommended for that position, if it would have been vacated, that Dr. Garcia would then be serving as interim.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, the whole process is, is what I think is at issue here, and at one point in late December, I think it was December 27th, the county administrator sent out a memorandum describing what was going on with the situation with the employment of Dr. Cullen. Ms. Lesher, do you remember that memorandum?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, I sent you an email.
An email. We looked for that email throughout your website, and we could not find your email. Do you know why it was unavailable?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, I don't know why you were unable to find an email that was sent to you all. I did not, it was not a memorandum, as such, it was not posted on the website along with other memorandums. It was an email dealing with an employment consideration. My concern at that point was, I believe that day, that Governor Hobbs was gonna be nominating Dr. Cullen, and I wanted the board to have a heads up before that occurred. So, the communication occurred in an email on December 27th at 11:14 a.m.
Could you read the email?
Certainly. Supervisors, I am pleased to share that Governor-elect Hobbs will soon be announcing her appointment of Dr. Teresa Cullen to serve as the Director of the Arizona Department of Health Services. Dr. Cullen has been an outstanding leader and advocate for public health during her tenure as Pima County's Health Director. I have asked Dr. Garcia to serve as interim director while we begin a national search. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Cullen and wishing her the very best in her new position.
Sounds like to me, Madam Chair, that at that point, Dr. Cullen is no longer an employee of Pima County.
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, what I hope to be clear about is indicating here, I said it will, she will soon be announcing her appointment, and that I will be looking for an interim and looking at a national process.
And when did the, Madam Chair, when did the process begin with her seeking employment with the governor?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, I don't know about her communications or conversations with the governor.
So, Madam Chair, so it's perfectly normal for a very top-level administrator in the county administration to say, "I'm leaving, I've got a, a good opportunity to get a job with the state and Governor Hobbs, and I'm gonna pursue that." At that point, you said, "Congratulations, good luck, we're gonna appoint an interim, Dr. Garcia, and we're gonna begin a national search." Now, you're telling me that that doesn't indicate that there is a severance of position on the, on behalf of, of, of Dr. Cullen?
County Administrator Lesher.
Certainly. Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, from that point, from December on, we are, my communication with Dr. Cullen was that she would not be leaving this position unless her, or until she was confirmed by the Senate.
That was your communication with her, that she, she had this job until she was actually hired by the state?
My communication with her was that she should not finalize her, finalize her resignation or retirement from Pima County. She, there was no need for her to move to, to leave this job while she did not have another job.
Respectfully, I think that this happens in a lot of organizations.
Not in mine.
When you have, well, I, maybe not in the small business community, but when you have government bodies that appoint, so, it with, someone is looking for a superintendency and they're your current superintendent, someone's a chancellor or an assistant chancellor at a community college and are applying for other positions. When they do that, up until they are accepted and appointed by that other body, and this has happened in 10 times in the time that I've served different positions, you don't tender your resignation until you know that it's gonna be an appointment because, like it was, it's a very political process.
Well, Madam Chair.
So, there isn't, so, respectfully, Supervisor Christie, we've, it's been indicated that she did not tender her resignation, that had she been appointed, there's still a period of time, usually when candidates have vacation or some other thing, they can put that information into the system, they put their last date. That didn't happen in this case. I think that I was anticipating that she was going to be appointed. That's what I thought was gonna happen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to disagree with your analysis because of...
Fine.
...a KOLD Channel 13 news article quoting, that makes a quote of our county administrator congratulating her on her new position. And then, it says after Hobbs' release came out, "Pima County announced, announced Cullen will be staying on the job despite stepping down weeks ago." Stepping down. She stepped down.
Supervisor Bronson, did you have something to add?
No, I'm just trying to take in all of this.
So, so we, at this, at this position, at this point, we don't have a hiring process, we're not reappointing, she didn't tender her resignation, she didn't put the paperwork through, none of that was finalized. And I think that unless anyone has any other questions, we can go ahead and move on.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Just two questions for Ms. Lesher. Was, was Dr. Cullen continuing to perform her duties as the head of our Health Department throughout the confirmation process?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Scott, she was. I will tell you that there were a few days she had to be in Phoenix relating to that new appointment, and she was on vac, she took formal vacation days those days.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. My second question, just one, one second Supervisor Christie. My second question, when Dr. Cullen submitted her resignation, did you and she agree that her resignation being finalized was contingent on her confirmation by the Senate?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Scott, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Supervisor Bronson, do you have a question? Great. Please, please, okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, to the question of Supervisor Scott, to the county administrator, that Dr. Cullen was on the job the whole time, other than the couple of days she was up in Phoenix pursuing another job offer up there. The Phoenix Republic makes a, a point in an article stating, stating that according to the Pima County Health Department and poison control, this is in relation to, to what we'll be discussing shortly, the hazmat issue. Pima County obviously was very much, Health Department was very much involved in the hazmat issue. Tell me exactly what Dr. Cullen's leadership was involved with in that issue? What did she do specifically?
Supervisor...
If she was on the job?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, I have a variety of emails and communications that occurred through that Wednesday morning regarding the health response with Dr. Cullen. Happy to provide you those comments.
And I think we have an item coming up that we can discuss. Okay. Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, in light of all of this, I think we're getting, we're going around in circles, and I don't know how far the board can, as you pointed out, can actually discern a, an employment status with, with an employee. There's, of course, the non-interference clause and things of this nature, so I would, at this like, at this time, to make a motion that the Pima County Board of Supervisors can convey a vote of no confidence in Dr. Teresa Cullen and her, and her ability to lead the Pima County Health Department.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
It dies for lack of a second. Supervisor Bronson.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
No, it died for lack of a second.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson.
And I appreciate Supervisor Christie's questions, and I think that points to how government does things and why people distrust how government relays information. I will not be, obviously, I did not second Supervisor Christie's motion, but I am concerned about how we conveyed all this information. It certainly doesn't inspire public confidence, I think. So, I appreciate the conversation, and Supervisor Christie's questions were mostly procedural in nature. They did nothing except for the last motion to denigrate the character of Dr. Cullen. It was really about process, and I think that process didn't put us in the best light, and that's unfortunate. Hope in the future, we, we will do better. But again, and the other thing on all of this is that this is a direct select, and I think Supervisor Christie mentioned that, and I think we need, as a board, to review the whole direct select process and maybe amend how we direct select and when. That's just, I'm not asking that this be something be done immediately, but I really would like us to re, or to look again at our direct select process to see if, in the current environment, it's what we should be doing or if we should change it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Bronson, and if you wanted to create a subcommittee or something, I'd be happy to do that.
I, I...
Yeah, no, I, I do think that it's important, I mean, it's one of the things that if you serve on other bodies, you realize there's some bodies that go into the weeds on every single appointment. Our Pima County Board does not do that. We have our county administrator that we have a direct responsibility to, and then we have one other position that by statute we vote on, and those are the only two. And so, I think that it's, I think, I would welcome the transparency, but, so I think...
No, well, well, yeah, go ahead, no. I think rather than us setting up a committee, let administration make some recommendations, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Again, I think we need to review direct select.
Madam Chair, if I may just add one final comment on the matter.
Supervisor Christie, and then we'll move on.
The, the nomination hearing committee up in, in Phoenix was basically a job interview for Dr. Cullen, and I think it's very obvious that in her job interview, she failed miserably. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, respectfully, I think that was an incredibly partisan, one-sided process. I think overwhelmingly considering the letters of support that we've received, including a letter from the Tojanaotlam Nation, Office of the Chairman and the Vice, and the Vice-Chairwoman, and also the San Carlos Apache Tribe. In addition to the other letters that we've received, many in our community are very thankful for Dr. Cullen's leadership, including myself. So, with that, we're gonna move on to item 3, an update on Interstate 10 hazardous material spill. This is a request by Supervisor Christie, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask our county administrator to provide us what the role of the Pima County Health Department was during this cleanup, and there is an attach, oh no, the attachment just says to put the item on the agenda. Go ahead, County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Grealva, and I have a couple of comments, and then the Director of the Office of Emergency Management is here, Mr. Shane Clark, who was very much involved through the day. And what I do wanna be clear about, we, this was one of those events where it had a significant impact on the people of Pima County, and fortunately, we were not the individuals who were in charge of this event. This was an event that occurred on a state route. It was under the incident command of the Department of Public Safety. They work on hazmat incidents, which is what we had in conjunction with the local fire department. That was then the Department of Public Safety and, and Pima County Fire. I think it's fair to say by Wednesday morning, when I, I know I was communicating with Supervisor Christie in his office at that point, it was pretty clear that there was communications deficiencies that did occur, and that we were not getting information out to the public. It's, that's when the Public Health Department did step in, and we began to post and to release information about what those public health and safety risks might be. But to walk through the entire event that occurred, I'd like to ask Mr. Clark to, to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Grealva, members of the board. If it is okay, I prepared an overview of where we're at at this time.
Yes, please.
Good morning. On 14, February 14th at 3:04 p.m., the Pima County Office of Emergency Management was notified that first responders had arrived at the scene of an accident involving hazardous materials on Interstate 10 between Colb and Rita Roads. The spill was later confirmed to be nitric acid of unknown quantity. Multiple law and fire agencies were en route under mutual aid request. Later, OEM was informed that Unified Command had been established with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, Tucson Fire, Tucson Police, Pima County Sheriff, and the Arizona Department of Transportation, and that DPS was incident command. And Tucson Fire was handling the hazardous materials response as the scene was located within city limits. Later, they would be joined by a DPS hazmat specialist. It should be noted that first response agencies and emergency managers are trained to the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System. This foundation for a common system across the nation was established after 9/11 by then-President Bush under presidential directive. It establishes that when incidents occur, like in this case, the jurisdictional law enforcement and fire department are responsible for managing the incident. As they require more resources, they activate mutual aid agreements. The role of emergency management is to serve the needs of the incident commander with resources beyond their control. Hazardous material incidents are some of the most complex to manage. They occur infrequently and require specialized training, a specialized team of hazardous material technicians to handle. They require early recognition and rapid decision-making, and it is deter, if it is determined, that the public can be at risk of exposure. At the same time, they are, they are methodical, as the type of hazardous materials dictate the personal protective equipment required to control and contain, and the additional resources required to clean up the spill to ensure safety of all. resources required to clean up the spill to ensure safety of all. What OEM has learned at this time, DPS arrived on scene at 2:44 PM and closed I-10 at 2:56 PM. The wind moved, the, the wind moved the plume cloud to the north-northeast. Due to plume invol, due to plume movement, there was a decision by command to evacuate a school, a large industrial complex, and trailer park. One resident in close proximity to the accident was also evacuated. More resources arrived to assist with evacuation and traffic control to, to close off the interstate and route traffic to surface streets. There was an additional fire at the scene that was, that was extinguished. Weather was a factor during the incident. This included wind, rain, and snow. The National Weather Service provided updates. For those that drove through the plume in the early minutes of the accident, exposure is been told to be very minimal. Arizona Poison Control has stated that someone would need to be within feet of the accident for a prolonged period of time to be exposed. They also stated that any chemical unlikely traveled that far. Operations continued throughout the night. Agencies were requested to move loads of dirt to, to cover the spill, the seamless challenge because of rain and snow. The investigation is ongoing. The Office of Emergency Management was not alone in first, is not a first response agency, and were advised by Tucson Fire at 3:04 PM with no request for support. At 3:25, OEM was requested to coordinate with Tucson Fire on a shelter-in-place mass notification message to the public through our My Alerts platform. The first message was delivered at 3:53 PM. Four additional messages would be delivered during the operation to the populated area regarding shelter-in-place. This included rescinding the shelter-in-place at 8:03 PM and reinstituting at 4:05 AM the next morning, when the plume started again. The last message was delivered at 5:06 PM on February fifteenth. County Administration was contacted immediately and updated throughout the operation. OEM was not the only county department involved. Many departments received calls from concerned citizens. Media and other organizations were directed to contact DPS Public Information Officer per request as the lead agency. Communications and OEM were in the DPS PIO Managed Communication Group. OEM was in contact with the Pima County Department of Environmental Quality. The Health Department was instructed, was instrumental in working with the Arizona Poison Control Center and developing public messaging with support of communications to educate the public to the great, to the hazards of the agents, of the agent, and to measures to take. Communications opened a public-facing webpage. The scene remained active for approximately 27 hours and was terminated at approximately 6:00 PM on February fifteenth, and I-10 was open for normal traffic. Notification of spill was submitted to the National Response System Center. It was reported 3,575 gallons was spilled. The last involvement from our office was on Friday, when my community outreach coordinator conducted an interview, media interview focused on My Alerts. While there is still remnants of the accident, the spill is contained with no reported environmental impact, and remaining materials are to be removed. I commend the efforts of the first responders and support agencies involved in the operations. There were no lives lost or injuries directly related to the hazardous material spill or the plume. Our condolences go out to the family of the driver and to his families. While the scene was successfully controlled and mitigated, there will be lessons learned that will strengthen our community and preparedness in communications and in response. As Ms. Lesher earlier stated, it is too early to discuss all the factors involved in the incident. Internally, departments are starting their hot washes, just as OEM conducted theirs last week. I have communicated with DPS and Tucson Fire, asking their intentions for an after-action process. At, at a time later, more information will be presented, which will include strengths, challenges, and recommended improvement areas. Pending questions, thank you. This is my summary.
Thank you Supervisor Christie, you added this item on the agenda, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hang tight for just a sec. I do, at this point, want to commend County Administrator Lesher. She was very aggressive in contacting me with my concerns. I, I had opportunity early Wednesday morning to ask that she give me an update. She expressed frustration as to the lack of information. She was very concerned about making sure that issues were addressed and that information was spread, and she made every possible effort that she could at that time to keep me informed. The problem that, that I think we see, and I think the frustration that County Administration, County Administrator Lesher experienced as well as mine, was that in an instance like this, it's the, the closest form of local government that people look to answers. No one initially contacted me. It was after I made the initial contact with the county administrator, she was able to keep me posted as, as the morning went on. But it really, as you say, the lead agency was DPS. There was no contact or information whatsoever with my district, with my office, with my constituents, and these folks were terrified, and understandably so. I mean, to have an orange-colored plume ricocheting through your neighborhood when you look out the window, and being told not to put on your heater because the, the pump might suck in that poison when it's 32 degrees outside, and there's snow on the ground, and you have small children or elder, elderly adults living in, in the home. So I think the, the lessons that we need to learn, but the issues that we need to address, is how does that information, when you have a state agency as the lead agency in a disaster, how does that, how does that information get to the local level where the constituents, the residents are looking for answers?
Chair Gudhala, Supervisor Christie, I understand your concerns, and I'm definitely bringing them forward as we walk through this hot wash and after-action process. And I will report back the conclusion of where we're going from that point.
We also had, I think, the county administrator will concur, the typical bureaucratic situation. And if you just rattle off the names of the, of the agencies that are involved, you have Arizona Department of Transportation Bureau of Land Management, you have Pima County, City of Tucson, Emergency, Office of Emergency Services Hazmat, Tucson Fire, Tucson Police, Pima County Sheriff, Pima County Health Department, all of them theoretically are supposed to be involved and active in something like this, but all of them, as active and involved in, in the situations they are, are each going like this. So there needs to be a clear delineation of, of authority, of chain of command, and of dissemination of information. That was sorely lacking and created a great deal of anxiety and, and fear with my constituents. And I didn't have any answers, didn't make me look very good, and it, and it was horrifying to hear the, the calls from my constituents, asking for help, asking for direction, and I couldn't do, I couldn't give them that information. Am I exaggerating the situation?
Chair Gudhala, Supervisor Christie. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Chair Gudhala and Supervisor Christie, I think Mr. Clark and I and others who were involved, as I spoke with you that day, shared your frustration. One of the reasons I think that's going to be critical to have Mr. Clark involved with the hot wash and the debrief, is that incident command and a chain of command in these incidents is designed to address exactly the problem that you delineate, and it failed. And that's what I think we need to get to the bottom of. The reason that we plug into a system is because people who have been through an emergency management operations like this, and Mr. Clark is one of the best there is, is we know what that chain looks like, we know who, how people report to whom, and there is an incident commander. It simply did not occur.
And Madam Chair, if I might.
Supervisor Christie.
This should be one of these things where all of those agencies I outlined should be able to reach right up on their top shelf and say, ah, here it is, right here, hazardous waste accident. That should be like a, something falling off a chair type of a simple operation. And that didn't seem to be taken into play. And because of the frustration that I know the county administrator felt, and because my constituents felt, and that I felt, I think it's essential. Now, I'm, I'm gleaning from this that, that your office, the Office of Emergency Management, was not immediately or initially or, or decisively involved in the process, that you kind of were brought in later? Is that correct?
Chair Gudhala, Supervisor Christie, I believe that the contacts occurred at the appropriate times. I believe that the actions tactically of the, of the Unified Command were sound. I believe that the decision-making that they did early on to evacuate was due to caution because they did not understand the full complexities. There are thousands of hazmat incidences. The Unified Command, the Department of Public Safety working alongside Tucson Fire. I believe tactically, they did, they did their jo, they did their job in an excellent fashion. They have checklists that they go off of, they have chemical, chemical analysis that they can perform. These hazardous material technicians are, are the very best at what they do. Where I also agree though, sir, is that the communication processes were the biggest gap that, that we need to work through, to ensure that we are doing a better job as the community, to ensure that, that you are getting the information that you need, administrative Lesher's getting, and more importantly, that our constituents are getting the information that they need. So on that, on that point, I believe that, that is the gap that we're going to be working through.
Thank you Administrator Lesher.
And Chair Gudhala and members of the board, and one thing I wanted to comment on, it is just this kind of concern that I believe it was the week before that under, with, with Director Clark's assistance, we convened the community response team to begin to work these issues within Pima County, so that we have the muscle memory going into an episode like this, or if there's an incident, because we understand exactly what can occur in an event like this, and then when the communication is not there. I would also note, however, that by Wednesday, when we were able to lean into some of the communications, the, the charts, the graphs, the public health information that was developed by the Pima County Health Department was ultimately then used by the state and distributed as the, as the central communications for the incident, but would have been helpful if we'd been brought in earlier.
And I think that for all of us, I mean, we all got the calls, like where are you? I was driving in the area with a bunch of young people, so I think the concern was like, how far is the spread? We really didn't know, and so a lot of those, that frustrating process, I think we all experienced, even though it was, you know, obviously in your district, because we all received that same message as a community. And so I'm glad to hear that you felt confident in the work that was done. I think for us, it was just, how do we get that information out sooner? And part of the concern is making sure that the information is accurate, because that's one of those things, where if like you, you jump to it, you might cause a lot of stress and anxiety to people unnecessarily, so I understand the balance. Supervisor Bronson, did you have something?
No, I, basically the CRT I was going to address, but you addressed it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Christie.
And I think with that information element and the closeness of local government to, to the constituents and to the district, I know, I, I would feel a lot more secure and confident knowing that our Office of Emergency Management was front and center in the whole issue, and not being delegated out of the picture, or not include, being included in by the, the Department of Public Safety, a state agency. We, we heard nothing from the state, we heard nothing from the governor's office, and apparently this fell in their jurisdiction. And I would just urge that local response teams, and particularly yours, because it encompasses so much, elbow, claw, whatever you got to do to get in there and take the lead. Because once we made, Pima County made its presence known, and you, you and your office were much more involved, the information started coming out. So I would try to avoid having to listen to DPS, or ADOT, or whatever, and think about our community first and what they want to know. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything you want to add? Director Clark, okay, thank you so much for being here.
Just one final.
Supervisor Bronson.
Did you enjoy the meeting today? You sat here a long time.
I'm sorry ma'am.
Did you enjoy the meeting today? You were here for a very long time. You probably could have used your time more wisely.
Chair Gudhala, Supervisor Bronson, it's always a learning experience, and I always enjoy, I, I.
Excellent answer.
Ma'am, what I will say is that I'm, I'm honored to be a part of Team Pima, and we all have efforts that we have to, that we are responsible for. I'm proud to be the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Chair Gudhala, Supervisor Christie, to your last comment, the reason why we have the incident command system, the way that it is built, is because the jurisdictional leaders of those departments serve those roles and, and, and by design, through the national response framework. I will also comfort you in saying, sir, that we were involved in communication within minutes of the truck going off the road and unfortunately taking the life of that driver. How we react to that point, again, we, we serve the need of the incident commander within that incident command structure. There is no Pima County Fire Department. We, we rely on the 21 fire departments and the 10 law enforcement agencies that serve this community to, to be tactically there when things are going outside the norm. And with that being said, we have great partnerships with our partners, with our fire and law enforcement partners, but back to your point, sir, and, and what has been stated throughout, is that concern of information flow. And sir, I promise you that we will, we will make that better.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our last item is Board and Commissioner Committee, Transportation Advisory Committee, the appointment of Kelly Lee to fill the vacancy.
I'll move the item.
District three, all second. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.